Thank you. Welcome to the budget meeting, councilors and our guests. It is now 5:38 on June 30th. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
I apologize for my language yesterday. I had a game at my house. My car was walking behind her. She said, "What happened?" I never want anyone to hear. I would never want that to be on record. I would never want anyone to hear that speech that way. So I apologize, and I'm sorry that that happened.
Thank you, Attorney Davis. Your apology has been certainly accepted by myself, and we will proceed with the meeting. Can you please call the roll?
I can't hear.
Can we speak into the mic just a bit?
Counselor Gomez?
Here.
Gomez?
Here.
Counselor Whitfield?
Here.
Here. Counselor Davila?
Present.
Present. Counselor Penney? Present. Counselor Perry?
Here.
Here. Counselor Ramos?
Present.
Present. Counselor Wolf?
Present.
Present. Counselor Williams?
Present.
Present. Counselor Allen?
Present.
Present. Counselor Letterman?
Present.
Counselor Edwards?
Present.
Present. Counselor Brown?
Um...
I know Counselor Brown.
Hello? Hello?
Yeah.
Can you guys, can you guys hear me?
Yes. Say, say, "Present."
He without sin throw the first stone. You have done an excellent job. I love what you do. It's no problem with me. Present.
Present. Counselor Hurd?
Present. With the councilors and their guests, please rise for a moment of silence, and we're going to dedicate this moment of silence to Devin McCafferty Long. Jerry McCafferty, who we all know well, lost her son earlier, earlier this month. And so we certainly send our condolences out to her and her family. Will you please remain standing for, for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
So, so just to recap, we finished yesterday's meeting where there was a motion made by Counselor Davila to cut $800,000 from the facility's budget. It was seconded by Counselor Gomez, and it was a favorable amendment to the budget. So we will pick up where we left off. If there are any comments or questions with respect to the budget or amendments from the councilors, we can feel free to do so at this time. Counselor Whitfield, I see your hand is raised.
Thank you, Mr. President.
And I'm sorry, before you go, Counselor Whitfield, can we please ask everyone who is not speaking to their devices, unless they are speaking? Thank you. The floor is yours, Counselor Whitfield.
Thank you, Mr. President. I thank everybody for joining us again today. Hopefully, we can finish this today. But I do want to just talk a little bit about training and incentives in the police department. And with that, I'm proposing cutting $250,000 from the police overtime line and using the money to incentivize scholastic achievements. So I don't want the police department to think this is a penalty. We're not here to penalize anyone. But instead, we want to take the money out of overtime to allow for scholastic achievement, whether that's a college credit program, professional or personal services like cultural sensitive training, anti-racism training, de-escalation training, mental health de-escalation training, peer intervention, or any type of credit-bearing courses where they can grow in their careers and in their futures. When I, when I crunched the numbers of 600 officers, the 125 that was proposed gives about 200, well over $200 per officer. That's not really going to get much training done. As I work in the industry, I create contract training for different organizations. And so just doing the math, 125,000 would not get us the training that is needed. But I just want everyone to know, this is not a penalize, we're not penalizing you. We want to make everyone better. So I don't know what the administration, what type of training the administration would come up with, but I'm hoping like a tuition reimbursement type program that will incentivize officers to continue their training or maybe even increase the amount that they're paid once they do earn degrees. But we definitely need some more culturally sensitive training and de-escalation training and all the other trainings that I mentioned. So I don't know if there's anyone who wants to respond to that.
Yeah. I'll be more than happy to respond to that. Again, a cut of 125 or reallocation of 125,000 is coming from the police department. Commissioner Clapproot and TJ Plant financial plus matching another $125,000. Police Department, Commissioner Clapproot could speak, and also Helen Carlton-Harris. They already do a multitude of trainings. This is going to add on what you had already stated, that I stated a couple of weeks ago, would be sensitivity training, cultural diversity training, mental health training, not only for the officers in dealing with our community, but within the department also. So we're on the same page there on that. And I put that, to diversify it, I put that in Health and Human Services under Helen Carlton-Harris. And also, the street worker program with street cred. They have individuals out there as we have to and we will knock down this gang and gun violence that is occurring. But I want to get to the root causes. Now, another additional cut, and I've already discussed this with TJ and Commissioner Clapproot, additional cut of a quarter million dollars. You are now cutting into proactive programs such as the C-3 Racing, Pubbing Core, the very popular Flex Ordinance Squad, which your neighborhoods love. So that's what I, a few reasons about what can be shifted. And I believe Commissioner Clapproot, and I spoke about that two weeks ago, if not longer, at our COVID-19 coronavirus meeting on Mondays, Dr. Peter Rapp and Dr. Ru saying, "We're going to shift some things off the police plate, but off of each public safety for our residents and our business community." And we're cultural sensitivity training, mental health training, outreach stuff, and the street worker activity to help diffuse situations or be proactive to stop situations or when something does occur, to be out there to facilitate with those borderline hardcore individuals and their families, if there's a better way to go and get information on it. So, but another quarter of a million dollars cut, I'll let, Counselor Whitfield, we're on the same page. That would be very devastating for the police department. TJ, and I know Commissioner, through the President, I know Commissioner Clapproot would probably want to comment on that too. But that's, that's a straight and narrow.
Sir, I would like to hear from the Commissioner Mayor. Sorry to interrupt.
So Counselor Whitfield, before we do that, let's, let's see if we can get a second to your motion, and then we can open it up to the discussion that you may want to have. So there's a motion on the floor made by Counselor Whitfield. There's a, there's a motion on the floor made by Counselor Whitfield. It was seconded by Counselor Gomez. Counselor Whitfield, you can proceed with who it is that you'd like to hear from with respect to this amendment.
So I just wanted to clarify what the mayor is saying is 125,000 going to the racial equity department for additional training along with another 125,000 for the outreach program?
250 total going to Helen. And then for her, there's programs being developed there on two points. The race, the sensitivity, sensitivity, cultural, mental health training for our officers, enhancing more what's being done with the police department. They already do de-escalation. All that stuff is, is being done priorly in academy. And not only for the, to deal with our community, all pre-cult and backups, but also in-house for the officers too. And a street workers program out of Health and Human Services. Now, they'll have to work in conjunction with the police department. But I want it more towards dealing with the root cause. That, this would all be out of Helen's shot. So it's 250 total, 125 again. It's difficult to talk to Commissioner TJ. What within reason? We talked about shifting some stuff off the police department's plate. 125 can be, can be handled within reason. And then I asked, but spend another 125,000 to make it 250 to start to get this office of racial equity going. So that's clarification. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you. Thank you. I did ask for a list of trainings. I didn't get a clear answer. I was told to go to 50, like some street to get the answer. So I'm curious as to how much de-escalation training is done in the police department. And like I said, Mayor, I think that the 250,000 is great. However, $200 per officer isn't really going to get much training done. I know there is 130,000 currently, I believe, in the, in the training budget. But is that for mandatory training? And that might be a question for the Commissioner.
Well, can I just say on that, again, Mr. Helen Carlton-Harris is a mister developing this whole program asset from outside look. Commissioner Clapproot could speak about the training that is going on now. And also Attorney Talia G., our Chief Diversity and Inclusion Officer, is involved in this also. Or Gerald Moss, he lost from my office. Also, and Ed Case from Sheriff Dick Coats, he's on the street, street worker.
Um, Commissioner, so Mayor, I just want to point out to you that we've been getting a lot of emails, calls, letters about defunding the police department. And because we don't know what defunding means, what that entails, and it's not even something that we want to do because we need our police officers to serve and protect. We didn't really look into defunding the police officers. But what we do want to do is improve on the training that's currently happening. Because whatever is happening is not necessarily working to the, to the benefit of Black and Brown, the Black and Brown community. And so, Commissioner, if you could just answer how much de-escalation training the officers currently get?
Thank you, Counselor. And to answer your question, we directed you to 50 East Street for the curriculum because it was too volumous to, to send in files. We tried that move-it file for you, and I couldn't send it. So 50 East Street has a full curriculum. And as you know, and it's, it's been explained before, Springfield police officers go through 26 weeks of an academy, which is above and beyond what is recommended by the MPTC. The academy they, they receive and the curriculum they receive is mandated by MPTC. So everything that is taught, the block of de-escalation, the block of racial diversity and bias, everything is, is laid out and mandated by MPTC. And we can't alter that, mess with that, lessen that. We have to certify that those blocks are taught. We then go above and beyond. We have a couple of weeks where we do special training for Springfield officers as to maybe some issues that are specific to the city of Springfield, whether it be diversity training, bias training, whatever is the hot topic at the time you're going through. Sometimes it's computer classes and new equipment that has to be taught during those final weeks. So everything is pretty much laid out in the curriculum. And there's a big, I think, misunderstanding when you talk about de-escalation. I don't think, as much as people do not really understand defunding police and what that means, I believe that people do not understand what de-escalation means and its training. Obviously, de-escalation is for the first encounter of the police officer and whoever they are encountering. It's to get along with the neighborhood. It's to teach about different cultures. It's to teach about different mannerisms. It's to teach about how to bring a person down from that excited state that they're at when the officers first get there. De-escalation is not taught for weapons or guns or somebody pulls a knife. There's not going to be too much talk about, "You shouldn't be doing that, and this is why." Then they're, they're already into a curriculum of a level of force that is above and beyond any de-escalation talk, unless we're dealing with mental illness. And I have sent about 44 officers through what is called the CIT training, Crisis Intervention Training. It's one week with the annual network councilors. They've already received all that. And once a week, one week a year, they go through an in-service training. And that curriculum is also decided by MPTC. And that includes a block of de-escalation and a block of non-lethal weapon contact and self-defense. So everything is pretty regulated from the, from the shooting to the curriculum. We have added our own training if we see fit. I've tried to get supervisory training. I think that's very, very, very important. That's what I would do if I had some extra money. We take people who go from patrolman to sergeant, and we just give them the stripes and say, "Here you go." It's very dangerous. That, that's the biggest gap, going from patrolman to a supervisor. And we need, we need supervisors to, to hold people accountable and to know what's right and wrong. And I, the more schooling they get at that stopgap level is, is you make a better supervisor. So that's what I would do if I had any extra. And then the FBI offers some good courses. And if I had extra money, I, I would do so. And we would get that rolling. It's leadership courses. Some officers have gone, a lot have expressed the wish to go. "I don't have the money, and I haven't had the money to be able to do that." That's where your overtime fund is very important to me because all this training, as I said before, comes on duty because we're operating in three shifts. I cannot train people usually with an instructor after 4:00 in the evening or before 8:00 in the morning. So we switch their shifts, and we make the training available on days so that I have to replace that officer. The squads are tight. Your squads are at the lowest number they've ever been. Days, nights, and evenings are at a low number. And they're still averaging anywhere from 280 to 330 calls per shift. So I have to maintain them. So when I remove officers to train, that's where my overtime money comes in to keep the shifts up to speed so we can answer all the 9/11 calls to come in. We also use that overtime funding money for these special hotspots. Like we have fireworks hotspots going on now. We have an East Forest Park hotspot because of the violence going on. Sometimes we have to meet one downtown if there's events. That's all comes from the overtime. Anything C-3 does extraordinary, above and beyond their shift comes from the overtime fund, as does the ordinance squads. They do a lot of events. That's why my overtime budget is important. As far as the educational funding for the officers, we get that now through the Quinn bill, through educational incentive. It pays for the officers to further their education and to get degrees. We support that. We, that's, the cadet program is wonderful. We have a cadet program that encourages you to, to finish school. We have a CIT training schedule set up. We already do Project Hope, which is downtown in the homeless and, and offering people different advantages to getting off the streets and getting into a shelter, getting your own home. We also run Pubbing Core. Bi-weekly, we bring in people who have social problems and issues and how to get them help. And that's why I look forward to teaming up with Commissioner Carlton and do a little more of that on-street help. That's going to be very important. I, I don't know if that covers your questions or...
Oh, that, that's very helpful. I'm going to yield to my colleagues and see if there's anyone else who, who wanted to speak or had anything to say.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. So Counselor Whitfield has made a motion to cut the overtime budget in the police department by $250,000. It was seconded by Counselor Gomez. Counselor Brown, you've had your hand raised in the queue on the motion.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. When it comes to policing, I do have biased opinions. But I was arrested by my own father. And I was racially profiled. And my father explained to me that being his son, I still should have just shut up and did what I was supposed to do. There were situations, and we know the cops. We know the bad cops, we know the good cops. But when I spoke to my father, he also is a very fair person. That is why I deal with him. He explained that when it comes to the training and the funding, you can't cut that stuff. It doesn't make sense. There are, it, it, it isn't the cops' fault. We need more services to cut and cut and cut and look at, and then want our police force to be able to execute things where I am. I need more. I need more. When I went, if you look, there was a, 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 a video that went viral with me where there was a police officer who called my father a slur, a racial slur. And it was another police officer high-fiving him. And in the C-3 meeting in Mason Square, the same cop is sitting there. So I understand that that stuff doesn't work all the time. I believe that we just need to have the right individuals in place to make us feel comfortable. But as far as cutting funding, it's too, it's too important of an issue when it comes to safety and just the day-to-day life. We cannot afford to do it. It's like a knee-jerk reaction. And, and, and believe me, I trust my dad. What I would ask for, I, I, I want to meet with the mayor. I'd hire my father to help you guys then. Because I believe he's a trustworthy person. We just have to have trustworthy people who we feel comfortable with. And believe me, I love the mayor. I love the President. You, Mr. President, I love Counselor Whitfield. Counsel, I love all you guys. I love, I, I trust the mayor. I do trust him. Even though in this situation, I might not agree how everything go, going about, but I do trust him. We all want the best for Springfield. And I think it's a better way to do it to just to cut the resources when it comes to mothers and fathers who are protecting us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Brown. I see Counselor Allen's hand raising the queue, followed by Counselor Gomez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I see an item later on our agenda, the Office of Racial Equity, 250,000. It's item five on today's agenda. And I saw that as being funded by $125,000 that the mayor had recommended from police overtime and 125,000 from some other source, that being, I think, free cash. And that was where, that's where my head has been. I then heard about the 130,000 that is there in the, in, in that line for, in the police training line. So if, if we could do number five, 250 plus 130, that's 380. That seems like a good start to, I don't, not the person to say how, how much goes where or what exactly the training is. That'd be somewhere between the Commissioner and Helen, it sounds like, from the Office of Racial Equity, and maybe some other people would be involved in that. But I'm prepared to, to, to cut to 125. If Counselor Whitfield would consider remanding her motion to 125, I think that's something many people could agree on. And it still gives 380 or so to, to get started in the year is that this stuff is all evolving. And that seems like a good number to evolve from. And as, as Helen gets involved with setting up this racial equity office, I'm sure there'd be further conversations. And if there was more need for money later in the year or more need for police overtime later in the year, we would consider it then. But I think that, that's where my head is. I would not support it but the police overtime of more than 125. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. Counselor Gomez, followed by Counselor Williams. Counselor Gomez.
I yield, I apologize. They already had asked a question.
Okay. Counselor Williams, followed by Counselor Davila.
Thank you, Mr. President. This conversation is taking place at an interesting time. And I am going to look to the state, which I rarely do, especially with Bud as my uncle. But I, I think it's important to be reminded that we have a governor who just actually proposed a bill directly to this topic. And, and of course, the bill is not in passage yet or, you know, but it's, it's on its way. And I believe it also received the support of the Black and Indigenous Caucus. So with, with reference to that bill, the governor is looking to create a state certification system for law enforcement officers to provide up to $5,000 bonuses for police to take on additional training. And, you know, the bill itself, it, it calls for certain types of training that police officers would, of course, go beyond their normal duties to assume. And so under the bill, I'll just read this verbatim, officers would be able to receive one-time bonuses if they go beyond the necessary minimum training and complete courses on topics such as advanced first aid, advanced domestic violence and sexual violence training, advanced de-escalation techniques, narcotics training, advanced training in bias-free policing, and foreign language proficiency relevant to police work in the jurisdiction in which the individual licensed officer is employed. So I just pulled that because I think, you know, if this, for example, hypothetically, if this bill were to pass on the state level, they, the officers who are, you know, would be looking, I guess, to receive that additional five, or up to $5,000 would have to take on more training than is what then, what is mandated currently. So I think it would be actually a really great idea if Springfield was kind of on the cutting edge of this to first align the, the trainings that we, for, for officers to assume with the state, essentially, especially if this bill were to pass. Solicited those, and I, I'd be happier to hear from Counselor Whitfield if her thoughts are aligned with mine and the sake of, again, consistency sake, aligning the state certification. That is, again, a hypothetical situation to the state as well. And another point, I, I do believe that in terms of being on the, the cutting edge of this, it sends a very powerful message. If we are, as a city, municipality ourselves, fracturing off this money front-end, knowing that there is an opportunity, again, for police officers to receive up to a one-time bonus in the amount of $5,000 to attend additional training. So if the money is there for the additional training that exceeds the, the minimum requirements for the state, then we're in a good position. So that, I, I think 250, 250 is not an unreasonable amount concerning how many police officers we have. And if I'm not mistaken, I believe we have the largest police force in the state itself, based on the amount of officers. So again, just looking to Governor Charlie Baker's proposal on the state level and in terms of what we're doing during this budget process, I think it actually makes sense to align those trainings with what he proposed initially and then provide the actual necessary money for that many officers to, to take that training up. And I'll just leave that on the table.
Thank you.
If I can, Mr. President, can I reply to Counselor Williams as he directed the question to me?
With all attention.
You can.
Thank you. Sorry, Counselor Davila. He did direct a question to me. So what I said in the beginning, this cut isn't to penalize the police department. It's more to incentivize scholastic achievement, which I think should have been happening all along. I don't know what the Quinn bill is paying for, but I was looking more for tuition reimbursement, some type of bonus program to incentivize officers to continue their higher education along with their professional and personal development. So I was definitely looking to that. And really quickly, just to talk about the numbers that Counselor Allen put out, that's not 100% true, that it's 380 going into 380. That's not a hundred percent true that it's three eighty going into training because one twenty-five was going into the outreach program, um, of what the mayor proposed and one twenty-five was going to go into training. And I believe the one thirty covers mandatory training. So it's not for additional training, but I'm not a hundred percent sure on that. And I would like the Commissioner after Counselor Davila, um, asked his questions to clarify that.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield, uh, Counselor Davila. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I speak on the issue, I just want to, uh, state that I do thank, appreciate, uh, or City Clerk Attorney Davis for her excellent work and her professional honesty. And, uh, please count on my full support. Thank you, Attorney Davis. Mr. President, um, I, I agree with Counselor Whitfield, uh, at least from my end. I'm not looking to penalize the police department. They do a fantastic job. It's just nearly impossible at times. Um, so I, however, with that being said, I, at least on my part, I'm always going to be, uh, fulfill my responsibilities as a counselor and I'm going to, uh, do what I think is financially efficient. Uh, I do have some questions, um, and I think this subject is in my mind between item number five, which Counselor Allen alluded to, the, uh, the Office of Racial Equity and, and this, uh, proposal. Uh, and I have some questions about, but I will, uh, ask those in a second. But I guess my first question will be, uh, this, let's start with a hundred and thirty thousand dollars that I just heard for the first time. That money is in the police department budget right now for extra training?
Yes.
And that goes to the Commissioner or TJ or whoever.
Yes.
So that is a hundred and thirty. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And so now we are looking to, and the question to the Commissioner Clappwood, uh, good seeing you again, uh, that I believe you said that de-escalation and the cultural sensitivity training, is that a yearly mandated training or are you in the books?
It, it's, it's academy, it's mandated in the academy counselor and the, uh, in-service training which officers get once a year. Sometimes that curriculum can change. It was in last year's. There was a diversity block. Yes.
So that I'm clear, I understood you correctly. So at least going forward, the yearly training that the officer has to do besides the CPR, the weapons qualification, so forth and so on, that would include a portion on a yearly basis for de-escalation and transitivity?
Yes.
Okay, I'm glad to hear that because I know I myself am trained in, uh, de-escalation technique. And, uh, that's like any other scale. It's a, it's a tool that you need to sharpen, uh, often so that it become effective. And, and I just want to point out that the Commissioner is absolutely right in the terms of the continuum of force that comes in time in which, um, talking is no longer an option, uh, and, um, the, for everybody's sake. Uh, however, the escalation is a powerful tool. Uh, now, the, this two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, is that all going to go to the human services? That, because, because I think Counselor Allen, if maybe Counselor Allen could shed some more light, he said two fifty plus one thirty, that's throwing me off. So is this, is part of this two fifty going to go back to the police department to another line?
Fine, Mr. President.
May.
I would love to.
Thank you, Mr. President. Now, the two fifty, this Office of Racial Equity is the first time this has ever been done in the city's history. Two fifty goes to Commissioner Helen Fulton Harris. There is the breakdown, she, programs being put together. So it doesn't, it's not a split of one twenty-five, one twenty-five. This is going to be for continued training on sensitivity, cultural, uh, aspects, mental health, officers dealing with our community of all three colors and backgrounds and in-house. And then the starting, and, and I'm hopeful if there's not a company, we want to do it through C three areas with the street workers on that. So that is being deliberated how the splits looks. Not necessarily one twenty-five, one twenty-five split. The two fifty, though, will be allocated if the council sees fit, which I hope you do, and I appreciate your consideration. We'll go to health and human services, take some of the stuff off of Commissioner, uh, Clappwood's plate and continue mental health, the cultural sensitivity training, not only deal with the community but in-house. And then the street, uh, workers, what I call street cred, uh, individuals being out here working in conjunction with the police department, but not at Helen's shop. But the one thirty is already programmed in the police department. This, as you said, has the academy training and then, uh, she has yearly training which changes. But this is Counselor Whitfield indicated, this would be substantial, continuing this ongoing training yearly and then creating the street, the, the street workers, probably deal with the root, root cause issues, which I think could work very well in C three, like the hub and core, the ordinance and flex squad type activities. So, and the other thing too, when you're looking to cut overtime, as Mr. Clappwood indicated, if you cut that overtime more, when these officers, he or she are going to train, she must make sure we have a full complement, not only the nine-one-one driven calls, the bureaus, and also, I know the councils is very popular with you because you're at many neighborhood council meetings. They, they love the C three. They love when they're at the meetings. They love the hub and core and they love the ordinance squad, flex squad. That, that, well, that will take away from it. And then it has to make sure those officers are replenished when they are going to train. Last thing on the Quinn bill, was I was not obligated to pay for that. I thought it was the right thing to do in the legislation. The legislature, state legislature funds probably not even fifty percent of that. They fund zero. And it could have been an easy out for me. I didn't think it was the right thing to do. We have funded it for, for a number of years for the council. We are, we're not the largest, uh, the largest police department is Boston and Worcester, then Springfield, and so that's something that, for any mayor, he or she could have said, I'm not obligated to fund it. I'm not going to fund it. I have, that's where a lot of the council with them indicated about the, uh, uh, training, going educational training, higher ed institutions. That's the Quinn bill. That takes care of, yeah, which Mr. Clappwood will probably explain more. So that's the, uh.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is my last question, Mr. President. I just want to make sure, uh, that, uh, as I mentioned in the past, I am deeply concerned with the summer pandemic, financial crisis, moving, uh, a very active, uh, potentially troublesome summer. I just want to make sure and I want to hear from the Commissioner that indeed, that she can reassure me this happens, that she can manage through with her current budget and get the resources we need to give everybody, say, including the officers, particularly for their overtime.
Counselor, yeah, right now with the budget proposed, um, I have confidence in doing that. Hopefully the pandemic eases up and hopefully we don't have anything else coming our way. And the summer is, is, if what we can manage, then what I have right now is I, I can, I can do that. Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And before I get to you, Counselor Brown, I just want to make sure Counselor Whitfield, were your questions answered?
Um, I, I, I didn't get a solid answer on the hundred and thirty thousand dollars if it's for mandatory training or if it's for additional training. And I also just wanted to point out that some of the trainings happen when officers are cadets and it doesn't take place again. And I think that's a problem in itself. Um, because if you get the escalation training once and you're a thirty-five-year veteran or a twenty-year veteran, you know, it changes, number one, over time and then you forget. So, um, if I could just get a clear answer on the hundred and thirty thousand. And to add, I wish we would have been able to have these conversations before this time so that everything would have been clear and we could have came to some agreement and consensus before the budget hearing. And so if you could just answer that, Commissioner?
Commissioner, if you could answer that question and then we'll get to Counselor Brown, who has his hand raising the cue, followed by Counselor Gomez.
Okay, Mr. President. Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. The, the cadets, their training is, is not, um, nearly as extensive or equal to the police officer training. I mentioned the cadet program because along with being a cadet and we're having a successful work ethic, you have to also go to school and get your associate's degree. So the educational incentive for them to become a police officer is mandated at that level. The academy is where we do the twenty-six weeks and everything that is recommended by MPTC. It includes de-escalation. In-service, things like de-escalation and use of force are gone over again. So the officers are getting that updated at least once a year. If something were to change or we get like, we got an upgrade in TASER, everybody's going to have to go through that again. We upgrade, we upgrade the weapons, we're going over the training again. So they constantly are, are trained in, in new techniques and de-escalation is always a part of that because that's a topic that's usually always changing on how to deal with a certain person, whether you're talking mental illness or somebody who's got, uh, got a medical problem. So those are usually updated every year. The hundred and thirty thousand, if I added to train, one thing I mentioned to you and that, and I'm going to make some, I need desperately some more sergeants. And that would be a, a week school that they would go to, a supervisory school on, on, on how to hold people accountable. And that jump, that step between patrolman and supervisor is very important. Um, we're also started that peer-to-peer program and, and a lot of training in that. I have officers who can help other officers with issues because suicide is at an all-time high right now amongst law enforcement and I'm concerned about that. And as they learn the peer-to-peer, they also, as a side note, I, I'm told it comes in very handy for the de-escalation training and for talking to other people. So there's training that, that works well not only in amongst our troops, but out, out in the community as well. So there's a lot of other things that, that I would like to do. And as I mentioned, uh, FBI has a good lead force. They, they offer a national supervision. We can send more people to that. And we have qualifications that I need to keep upgraded, like divers and, and ESU. And they, they need new training all the time because everything changes. So, um, that money is well spent.
Thank.
Thank you. Um, I don't know if it was still clear. Um, I think some of it is used for mandatory training and some of it may be discretionary. Is that right, Commissioner?
That's correct. There's some mandatory training that, that we have to do, um, to keep up statuses and qualifications. But there's a lot of other things I would like to do and that supervisory courses and leadership courses are, are, are on the top of my list.
And, um, I just want to say I appreciate, I knew the Quinn bill was, um, was funded and I appreciate it continuing to be funded. And, um, also I think scholastic incentives also include personal and professional development. So I just wanted to say that. But, um, yes, we do appreciate the Quinn bill.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield, Counselor Brown, uh, followed by Counselor Gomez.
Uh, I first want to thank, uh, my colleague, um, Counselor Whitfield. Um, I think she made a good point when it comes to the communication part. I think that's what a lot of things when it comes to the whole conversation. Um, I can assure you, um, what happens is, I think people say you shouldn't have religion in state and all of us fear God. We all love God. It seems like, it's like a whispering part. I know when, at the end of the day, when I look in the mayor's eyes, I know he fears God. We had an issue with people being displaced when his father had passed. And I had to see him still do his political thing and I can see that he was hurt, but he still had to play the game when it came to the political thing to help people. At the end of the day, we're all just trying to help people. I wish that we can just sit down at the table and work better together. Um, he's, he's one of my mentors and I love him for a reason. I know he is a people's mayor for a reason. Now, on this commissioner stuff and some of this stuff, no, I don't agree with him, but he is a mentor for a reason. We have to be able to come together and make things happen. But as far as cutting the police stuff, we have to think of another way. Let's sit down, let's talk with each other a little bit better. I mean, we're all great people. I mean, I know each and every one of you guys. And it, this, right now, it, this isn't the answer. We need to protect ourselves. Who are you going to call? Ghostbusters? We need not to take away resources from our police. In no way. We need more resources. And I respect every single one of my colleagues. I trust every single one of you guys. I admire you guys. I admire the mayor. I promise you, this is not the right way. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Brown, Counselor Gomez.
Thank you, Mr. President, on the motion. Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I believe that, uh, you know, uh, on, on the merits of, of, of the motion, um, those are just propositions that, uh, you know, our colleague made. Obviously, ultimately, we don't know exactly where these funds are going to. Um, I know a lot of us probably, um, have some different opinions on, you know, uh, where this money should go to. But I think, uh, cutting this, cutting this amount of money, um, shows the administration that, uh, you know, the council will, would like to be notified on a regular basis or be in communication. So that, I, I, I am in accordance with, with, uh, with my colleagues that obviously the, the communication isn't uh, necessarily there. Um, and I think this brings to the, uh, brings to the table that, um, when it comes to the certain trainings that they are going to take, maybe, um, we can talk about those once we, uh, disperse of this motion and, and, and be able to work on the rest of this budget. I think, uh, being hung up on the fact on why, and why not to and why to do, um, is, is hanging us up. I think that, you know, these are conversations we could have after we disperse some of it. Um, we understand that these funds, the administration has alloc, um, has put them in the budget for certain things. And if any of us feel like, you know, um, that is not the right move to make, they can just vote no. I think that we can move forward and, and, and really, you know, talk about what that money was for and officially have some real dialogue and show some good faith that, you know, that, um, we're willing to talk. Uh, we're willing to communicate and, uh, directly look at where the impacted areas in our community. We're not saying that, uh, you know, we're not the ones saying, hey, uh, uh, take away C three or take away some services from C three. And we're not saying that, but essentially the administration as per, as before has come to us uh, on a separate order, like we, we spoke about yesterday's, uh, 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 cut that we made, that they can come to us and when it's necessary, they can come and ask for more money. And, and they have done it before and we have supported that. So I think that, you know, we, we should stay away from the narrative, uh, the false narrative that we do not support law enforcement, the, the, the false narrative that we are, um, penalizing. I, 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 I just don't think it, um, that's, we shouldn't have to clarify, um, specifically if we support law enforcement or not because we all know we love, uh, all of our, um, employees here at the city of Springfield. We just feel that we're doing a fiduciary, uh, uh, fiduciary, uh, responsibility. And with that, I, I plan to support my colleague's, uh, motion. I, I seconded. But with that being said, I hopefully this opens up more dialogue instead of, um, you know, uh, and, and, and more legislative action on our part in this next season to make sure that we answer some of those places and, and ways that the administration, um, uses the, 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 the law to, to weave and, 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 and move around us, you know, um. Here nor there, uh, those laws were created when some of us weren't here. So that's something that I'm looking forward to do is after, uh, we finish this budget. And if this motion passes today or if it doesn't, that we have more, uh, communication, you know, once we start opening things up. I think that what has leveraged and, and really made this, uh, this process difficult is because of the pandemic. And, um, this doesn't say that, uh, no one's doing a good job. I think all of us are, are, are putting our heart and soul into representing the city of Springfield. But I think moving forward, this is just going to open up a, a, a lot more conversations instead of just one or two people on the council getting those meetings. Because essentially this, the, the, any decision that is made affects all of the city of Springfield, not just some of them. Thank you so much and I appreciate the time for my comments.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Gomez. So there's a motion on the floor to cut the police overtime budget by two hundred and fifty thousand in hopes that, uh, it will be reallocated for another purpose, uh, with respect to professional development and, uh, and additional education. Um, Counselor Ramos on the motion.
President, thank you. I plan on only speaking briefly on this issue once and then voting. Like to vote on, on this issue. But I, I support, um, But I, I support Counsel Whitfield's motion. We look at what the city of Boston did recently. The city council in Boston, with the support of their mayor, cut their, their overtime budget by twenty percent, which equaled, someone is typing, Mr. President is very...
Can we please mute our mics or our devices?
Thank you, Mr. President. The city of Boston cut twenty percent out of their overtime budget, which came out to twelve million dollars. The city of Brockton recently cut their overtime budget by twenty percent, which came out to two hundred, roughly two hundred thousand dollars from their overtime budget. What my colleague is proposing is roughly a thirteen point nine percent cut from the overtime budget for the Springfield Police Department, well under the, what is, what the other communities are doing in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Those funds in those communities have been directed, redirected to equity and inclusion and training. I support the idea of redirecting some of these funds for more training for our police officers. We can never have enough training. I, I, I don't want to hear the words, we're already doing that. We hear that often, too often. I don't want to hear that anymore. Do more. You know, we're already doing, it's fine. If we're already doing the training, do more training. Make it longer. Do it twice. Whatever it takes. But it's fairly obvious that what we're doing right now is not enough. You know, people are demanding police accountability. People are demanding more training for our police officers. And, and we need to do more. And we have to listen. I don't necessarily agree that we need to incentivize training. I think that there are enough incentives for police training. The Quinn Bill is one, one example that we've talked about thoroughly. So I don't necessarily agree with that. But I do agree that we need to have more training. And, 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 and just one more thing. I, I'm, I'm, get tired of having to, e-every time that we discuss anything related to the police department, I just get tired of having to always reemphasize a disclaimer that we support police. We do support the police. We support the police department. I support the police department. I love the police department. I love our officers and I, I, they all do a great job. It doesn't, just because we are discussing redirecting some of the overtime funds, doesn't mean that we don't support our police. And I'll give you an example that, you know, for those of us who are parents, we love our children. But sometimes we have to say no. Doesn't mean that we love them any less. It just means that we have to be responsible. And as legislators, we have to be responsible. Sometimes we have to say no. And it would be the, the best course of action for us to redirect some of the overtime budget. It doesn't mean that it's the, the end of the world. You know, throughout the year, we, we've seen additional requests for overtime later in the year. And so if for whatever reason, there's a spike in crime or there's a shortage of officers and we find ourselves sometime in, in May of next year that there's a shortage in, in overtime and we need an increase, come back to us. Let's have a conversation. I'll support it. But, you know, right now, i- it just doesn't make sense to start with it with such a huge pile of money for overtime without even knowing whether or not we're gonna need it. So I, I say, I support this motion. If it turns out that we need more money for overtime later on in the year, we'll have that conversation. I don't want to see any services cut. I don't want to hear that C3 is gonna be cut in this neighborhood or that neighborhood because of this, because it shouldn't. We should be able to continue the services that we're, that we're doing. And if later on, we're running out of money in the overtime budget, then we'll have that discussion. But for now, I, I wholeheartedly support the motion. To be perfectly honest with you, Mr. President, I would like, I would, I like round numbers. I would have preferred to, to redirect two hundred thousand dollars rather than to two fifty. But I support Counsel Whitfield's motion, and I'll be voting in favor.
Thank you, Counselor Ramos. Counselor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Counselor Ramos, you actually provided a pretty good segue into my comment for just in the spirit of compromise and considering that counselors Hurst and Whitfield and I sent three proposals to the mayor a couple of weeks ago in regards to proposing police overtime budget cuts. Two of those proposals included a two hundred thousand dollar cut that the city council would employ. And the third option, of course, was the one twenty-five that we're seeing proposed today by the mayor. And, you know, I'm not, if, if, Mr. Mayor, I'm not insinuating if you choose not to accept the fact that, you know, the number bigger we used is where, where you got your idea from, then that, that's totally fine. That's not a matter of discussion today. But in the spirit of compromise, and because I do believe intellectual property is significant, I will say that we should steer towards two hundred thousand dollars to round the figure off. And also considering Commissioner Clapper's numbers are, and figures that I thought were pretty important, you know what I mean, in terms of how this might impact the overtime. So yes, I am, and of course, Counselor Whitfield, I'll, if you can entertain this, if we can cut two hundred thousand dollars, which would be, of course, a seventy-five thousand dollar increase from what's being asked today, I think that might put us in a better spot and also bring us lower than that thirteen percent figure of, of the overtime budget that was alluded to prior. So I will, if at the appropriate time, again, Counselor Whitfield, depending on what you'd like to do in regards to either continuing with your motion or withdrawing it, at the appropriate time, I would like to propose two hundred.
So thank you, Counselor Williams. And I'll certainly defer to Counselor Whitfield after we hear from the individuals who have their hand raised in the queue on the motion to cut two hundred and fifty thousand. So Counselor Brown, followed by Counselor Fenton, on the motion.
I definitely respect my colleagues, Counselor Williams and Counselor Whitfield, Mr. President, when it comes to these situations. And all my colleagues, I do understand that when it comes to budgeting, we all have somewhat of a grasp of it. What I do also understand is our day-to-day life. I never would tell Walmart how much money they need on their day-to-day operation. Me, when it comes to the budgeting, I would at least believe that they would understand that. When we wake up in the morning, we don't put a badge on and now decide how much cops we need to actually service our areas. In the same breath, we can't talk about fireworks and, and having cops, not enough cops to, to service us when it comes to the fireworks. And then in the same breath, we're gonna say, we're gonna cut that funding? Just, I understand a little bit more just based on my relationship with my dad and everything and the resources that the police need. I can assure you that we don't have enough. As far as trying to take away, we can easily petition for more. I was disappointed in the way that we petitioned the state for funding. So to take away, it's not the right thing to do. It's a high volume where there's a group from the Ave in my area who's killing kids over here up in College Street and all around the area. It's a shootout. So I would at least say please to my counselors, don't take away any of that. We need protection. We need the service. We need everything we can get. We need the counseling. Yes, I agree. But we don't need to take away from anything. We need to just petition and get more. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Brown, Counselor Fenton. Did I see your hand raised in the queue?
Yeah, but I'll, I'll yield to Counsel Whitfield.
I see Counselor Davila and then Counselor Whitfield. So Counselor Davila, and then we'll turn it over to Counsel Whitfield.
Thank you, Mr. President. I seem to be having a little bit of technical difficulties. So if I lose you, I'll move my phone back on. I'm just gonna make a very brief comment. It, it seems to me, this, at least on my part, my concern about the potential active summer, I got the reassurance from the police commissioner. It seems to me that this money is gonna be allocated towards a new office. That's what it appears. And so I, you know, I'm gonna go out here, I'm gonna take the word for it. And I am planning to vote in favor of this cut, as it is my understanding, again, not to penalize the officers, but it's a reallocation of resources that we are doing within the, the very limited resources that we have. So I will be supporting the motion, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. Before we get to Counsel Whitfield, Counselor Curran, did we acknowledge you as president, sir?
Yes.
I believe you did.
Okay, all right. Sound, my apologies, Counselor Curran. Counselor Whitfield, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate all of my colleagues and your comments and those that support. However, I'm not here to be, play hardball. I'm not here to, you know, the mayor keeps saying C3 because he know I love C3. And I think C3 does a great job. I think community police is something that all officers should be trained in. And I know that the new cadet and the academy, I think the academy had to go to the C3 meetings. However, I do think that some of the overtime may be reduced because there's not as many events as there normally is in the summer. But I'm not here to play hardball. I, I just wanted to be clear communication, we'll force, we can work out these details together so it doesn't seem like there's an attack on the administration or lack of transparency with the city council. So I will withdraw my motion to cut two hundred and fifty thousand if my colleagues would agree to a cut of two hundred thousand that was suggested from Counselor Williams and Counselor Ramos. And I don't know, Mayor, is that something that you can live with? Because Counsel Ramos made a good point. I remember last year, the administration did come to the city council for more funding for overtime. And we did approve it because we know that the officers being on the street is very important. And there was a shortage of officers at that time. I am not anti-police. I love police. I am friends with a lot of officers in the community. I work every week with the officers of the C, the Mason Square C3. I, I was visiting the other C3 units. So there's no way I'm anti-police. All I want to do is reallocate. So I just want to make that clear for Counselor, I'm sorry, Counselor Brown. We are not trying to cut the police department. We are trying to reallocate funding to training. And...
So Counselor Whitfield, did you want to hear from the mayor before you withdraw your, withdrew your motion and made another motion? Or do you want to withdraw your motion, get it seconded, and then hear from the mayor?
I would like to withdraw my motion, hear from the mayor, and then make a new motion because I just want to hear from the mayor.
Okay.
Out of respect. So I withdraw my motion. I would like to hear from the mayor, and then I'll make a new motion.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. Thank you, Mr. President. No, I will not support two hundred and fifty thousand nor the two hundred thousand. And as I stated before, Commissioner Clapper and I spoke about this subject well over two and a half weeks ago publicly, publicly. And the numbers that you bring about, those are numbers that I discussed with Commissioner and Chief Plant. I know you discussed with Mr. Plant also too. That numbers that could be comfortable for the police department in order to carry out their duties and in order to work together, carry out what we all want to see, more diversity training, sensitivity training, and mental health training, not only for our officers feeling good all of our community, no matter what creed, color, and background, but also in-house. And then, on the city's Facebook page, a week or so ago, I had my street workers meeting also. So these, I think is that I see them procured from others, work together. So this was on the table for quite a while. And we were just ready to make the announcement at that point in time. But in speaking with Commissioner Clapper, no department or cabinethead wants money taken away. He want actually more money. Anytime you're looking to take money away, I felt, in speaking with Mr. Clapper and speaking with CFO Chief Plant, this was doable in shifting some responsibilities, which Mr. Clapper and I spoke about a few weeks ago, the COVID nineteen coronavirus, taking some things off, like the police department, shifting them with a different perspective, a human service perspective, health perspective, disparities that you saw with the COVID nineteen coronavirus for the black and brown community. And those discussions started a while ago. Did you get that money a hundred percent? What, because I want to make sure, because I know you get the calls too. People want police response, making special detail, dealing with the fireworks now. Other issues come up. A lot of times, C3, the Hump and Core, these, I asked if there's more of a cut, what would be touched? This is coming from the commissioner, the flex squad, the ordinance squad, by the situation created. Everybody loves that, which you have to replenish, go talk to the creator. So two fifty, which is one twenty-five, that is a package handled. I appreciate if we have to come before the council for anything else or do diligence on that. And now another hundred and twenty-five, that's put in there, put a money, foundation money of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, quarter million dollars, to start dealing with the root causes. Of this issue on the street, stop some of the beating and gun violence going on. And also, you know, who helps, not the police department, the street cred workers. And the other thing too, I'd appreciate it, if you continue to advocate, if you support them, off the streets. And some are prolific offenders. And I'm not afraid to, and I've said it, and some judges are the move, that if they continue to release these individuals when neighborhoods are cooperating with, with us, and some of the crimes, these are not crimes where you deserve second chances in the public. They're letting right back on the street. Sometimes with no bail. And these are the people that you hear from, they do hear from. How, Mayor, Mr. Counselor, Sardo, why, why are they back on my street? But I, I worked with you to make sure, play the monster. So it's, it's a multitude of, of, a multitude of broad approaches have to be taken. But one twenty-five can be handled. With all due respect, I can't cut two hundred thousand or two hundred fifty. I asked, on those cuts, what would it affect? It affects those specialized units in our neighborhoods and our public business committee. I don't think you want to do that. But I think the one twenty-five plus one twenty-five on the budget, sorry, quarter of a million dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to, I, I just want to make a point. So first of all, it seems like you're redirecting the conversation to talk about criminals or violent offenders that got low bail or put back on the street. But I want to know if that same vigor is going to apply to officers that cost taxpayers eight hundred thousand dollars, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, a million dollars in court cases when they, when they violate civil rights in the community. Do we have that same vigor for them? Time and time again, on the news media, I hear you talking about re-offenders that need support, that need training, that you don't know what their background is like. You don't know what they go through. You don't know how they are targeted. Time and time again, I hear that. But do we have that same vigor? Do we have that same enforcement to officers that violate civil rights, that cause death, that brutally beat, that brutally beat civilians? Do we have that same vigor? And I'm going to stick to my motion of cutting two hundred thousand dollars because I think these officers that are committing these offenses need additional training. They need cultural sensitivity training. They need anti-racism training. They need to know how to deal with people with mental health issues and de-escalation. Do you know how many times folks come to C3, to C3 and complain about how, how officers treated someone who had, had mental health issues? I don't think they do because you're not at the table. I'm at the table. Officers need more training. So I'm going to make the motion to cut two hundred thousand from the police department overtime line item and redirect it to training. And I'm not gonna ask any more questions of the administration because I don't want to come back to the violent offenders. because I don't want to come back to the violent offenders in the community. If you're not sitting down and talking to the violent offenders in the community and knowing what's happening in their life and their background, let's talk about the officers that's brutally beating civilians and the taxpayers are paying for their lawsuits and misconduct. Let's talk about that.
Second.
Counselor Whitfield has withdrawn her motion and made a motion for 200,000 to reduce her original motion from 250,000 to 200,000. It's been seconded by Counselor Gomez. Counselor Fenton, your hand has been raised in the queue on the motion, Counselor Fenton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd be happy to hear from the mayor if he'd like to respond to any of that before I say what I have to say.
Thank you, Counsel Fenton. Thank you for recognizing me. Again, I've said it numerous times to the council president. When you say about taking seriously, that case should be talked about. I brought in a retired justice, Judge Bertha Josephson, and an independent outside attorney to work with our civilian resident community police hearing board to pursue those charges. I held a press conference in the law department a couple of years ago or less, explaining everything we tried to do to bring justice. Nobody hates a bad cop more than a good cop. We were told by the Attorney General, the District Attorney, hands off, we're pursuing these issues here. So right off the get-go, to have independent look, outside look, brought in retired judge, well-respected Bertha Joseph, and an outside attorney to pursue that situation, which I was not happy about at all. We had to, on the federal DOJ, Attorney General, and with the District Attorney said, hold, hold, because we're reviewing these situations. So we've been, we started, we've been ready to go. I know Mr. Pacula can speak on that also. Tracy, on the other point, I'm with you as far as the training, everything like that. And as far as with the violent repeat offenders, yes, I go hard. But I'll also go hard on officers, what you said there. And that's what we did. That's what I did. I ordered an outside independent, and I brought in a retired, well-respected jurist, Bertha Joseph, to work with the community police hearing board, our residents, to pursue charges and punishment with those individuals. Other higher authorities said, hold, do not proceed. Do not proceed. Let us do these things. And I, Commissioner Clappert has moved the fire officers also too. So in fairness, on the other issue, we're on the same page. We're on the same page.
And thank you, Mayor. I want to, I want to change the line of questioning here. I first want to say that I appreciate that emotions are high on all sides on this issue. And Counsel Whitfield, I want to thank you for agreeing to reduce your original cut from 250 to 200. I think that that's a nice gesture. I have a couple of questions about the overall impact of this, though. I understand the desire for more training. But I don't know that a cut to overtime is the most logical way to do that. And to illustrate that, I have a couple of questions. So Commissioner Clappert, isn't, I think I heard you say that the majority of the training that you conduct is paid for out of your overtime budget. Is that right?
That's correct, Counsel.
So, so to cut the fund that generally is used for the training that we're saying we want more of at the outset seems to be a little counter, very counterintuitive, actually, to me. The other thing that I want to ask of TJ is just specifically the impact in terms of logistics, not in terms of services, but in terms of logistics, of making a 200,000 cut from the police department budget in this way. It's, it's my understanding that if such a cut were to pass, the impact would be a dollar-for-dollar impact on our revenue side budget and our tax level. Is that right?
Well, they're not exactly linked as closely as dollar-for-dollar, but you know, we do rely on the tax levy for a large majority of our revenue, the local source revenue that we generate. So it's not necessarily a dollar-for-dollar, but reducing the overtime budget logistically makes it so. I mean, the police department spends more than 1.8 billion most years due to lack of staffing. Another 200,000 out of it just costs for some further
I guess what I'm saying is that the revenue budget and the expense budget have to match, don't they? So if you reduce the expense budget, you have to also reduce the revenue budget. You don't then just say, oh, we cut 200,000, and now we've got an extra 200,000 at the end of the year. You just raise 200,000 less dollars because you have to have, for DOR, a budget that balances both revenue and expense.
Correct. The city council cannot add to the budget, so we can't reallocate the funding as the city council desires.
Right. So in light of that, cutting 200,000 in expense doesn't mean that there's going to be an extra 200,000 in revenue to spend somewhere else, as has been talked about a lot in the course of these cuts. It means the money's gone. And in most cases, that money comes from the tax levy, and we can't recapture it. I don't think the chairman of the assessors is here, but that is something that is just a reality of the impact of making these types of cuts. Now with the mayor's proposed cut of the 125, it's different because it's accompanied with an appropriation order for 125 on the same agenda for the budget. So that would get rolled back into the revenue side of the budget and could be reallocated in the way that he's proposing. So I just, I understand the need for more training. I would love to support additional expenditures for more training. But I don't think it makes sense to cut the account that's used for training in order to get more of it. And I also don't think that it's reasonable to say that we're cutting this in hopes that we can reallocate the money when that's not what happens. The revenue does not remain if you cut the expense. So that's why I will oppose the cut to the overtime budget for those reasons. And the last point that I want to make is just a procedural one, Mr. President. Counsel Whitfield's motion and revised motion was to cut the overtime account. But that's, that's not before us. As has been highlighted in, I think, our last meeting, we have to cut one of the line items that's presented on the agenda before us. And in the police department account, there's really just, there's three line items. Personal services, which is salaries, expenses, which would include, at a much lower level, the overtime budget, and then the capital budget. So I would just ask that before we take a final vote on this, which I hope is coming soon, I hope that we clarify exactly what account is being cut because I don't believe the council has authority to cut a line item that isn't before it for a vote. And I want to thank everybody for their patience and attention.
Thank you, Counselor Fenton. So I will, on the technical issue, I will defer to Attorney Davis, our clerk and/or anyone else who can speak to that. I don't know who might be able to speak to exactly what has to be cut or how we need to cut it. Attorney Davis, can you speak to that at all?
Mr. President, I can take that question. So the way the budget is presented to the city council, it's by fund, the function of the department. And the only areas you can cut would be those three categories that Counselor Fenton mentioned. And in order to do the cut that cannot be targeted anywhere, you're cutting it, you would be cutting overtime from personal services for the tune of whatever the number, 125. And then you'd have to announce the fund, the function of the department, and name the personal services. And then they take the motion ahead and probably second it.
And so that, the personal services is the same area in which the mayor is asking to cut 125,000, correct?
Correct. That's just the overall, yes, it is. That's the overall. So we have all salaries and wages, inclusive shift differential, overtime, all that.
Just, just wanted to clarify that. So Counsel Whitfield, you can, if you would like to revise your motion in accordance with Counselor Fenton, who I think made a very valid point, before we move on, that might make sense. And then I see Counselor Davila, as well as yourself, Counsel Whitfield, in the queue.
I will revise my motion, but just for clarification, the revenue, we cannot increase the revenue, but the administration will find out what to do with that revenue. So we cut it, and they reallocate it. It's not cut from the budget and cut from revenue. That's not how it works, and I just wanted to clarify that. Hold on, guys. I'm on the phone. I'm on this call. Sorry, I got some kids over here.
Sounds like my household.
I will revise the motion to cut 200,000 from the personal services line of the budget. And when it's reallocated, I will hope in a good faith effort that the administration would put it to training. It is their ultimate decision. And if they choose to put 125 to training and do whatever else with the 75, that's something that they're going to have to answer to the community about. But I, I'm asking that it goes to either Helen's department or additional training for the police officers. But I would like to revise that motion. Thank you.
So Counsel has revised her motion. It's been seconded by Counselor Gomez. Madam Clerk, if you could please notate that for the record, it would be greatly appreciated. Counselor Davila, you have the floor, followed by Counselor Whitfield, who had something to add.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I speak on the motion, which is directly related to, my comments are directly related, actually, to the motion, I might be of the minority here, we're going to all to say. But I, of all I say, you know, I was complaining, I'm very concerned with the violence in the street. I'm concerned with the, not only the violence, but the acuity of the violence. This is a very deep rooted problem, has many, many faces, many, many reasons. Poverty being one of them, of course, and something, and we need to attack the root causes. So I might be the minority here, but I just want to say that I, and this, I agree with the mayor that we need to, you know, these violent offenders and violent criminals, they're not coming here to sing lullabies or to be nice to us. So I, I'm sorry, I don't have time for BS on that, on the violent offenders. I say that because I asked the commissioner a little while ago. My impression that was that we called it 250 from the police overtime. And I asked, and I would like re-clarification from her. When I ask you, were you under the impression that I was talking about 250 or 125?
President, who's the question directly to?
To the commissioner Clappert. I'm just saying that when I asked a little while ago about, do you feel confident that if we make this cut as proposed by Counselor Whitfield, which was 250 at the time, if you're going to be able to handle the violent or the potential hot summer? And you said yes. So I'm just giving you a chance to clarify to me, unto the audience, and to all the councils. Were you under the impression that I was talking about 250 or 125?
125.
125. Okay, okay. Just to be, just to be fair, to be clear. And so, Mr. Mayor, if I may ask you, sir. Where, so you're looking for 125 from the police budget, which now has been clearly clarified as even coming from the personal services. Where would you come up with the other 125?
Mr. Plant, we have that, 147.
Oh, TJ.
I was coming from estimated revenue, which is essentially the free cash line item. And technically, the way we're doing it is have reduced the police department overtime by 125, and we did a full appropriation of 250, knowing that on the balance sheet, they, you know.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. We have Counselor Gomez on the motion, followed by Counselor Whitfield.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know that Counselor Fenton had mentioned some, I guess that if we were to cut this, that we would lose it. And the only reason why that 125 would, would work on the, on the cut that is from the mayor to reallocate it to racial equity office was because we have an order in front of us right after we're done doing this business. So are we allowed, well, not we, right, not us, but the administration, are they allowed or are we allowed to amend that document to reflect the cut? If that was necessary, is that legal? Can, is, could we have done that if we wanted to? It's just a question. And then I have a follow-up question.
I think they filed the order, so we certainly can amend their order.
Okay, no problem. All right. And then now, secondly, my question essentially is, we're talking about training and community stuff. I know it's not necessarily in front of us, but I just wanted to be on the record stating that I think that the Shannon Grant and the SSY money should be also reallocated out of the police department into another service that respectfully, if it's under Helen or something. So the community has more access. And I know that Counsel Brown and a lot of us were questioning during the time when we're accepting the grant, specifically to the fact that how we can open it up more to different organizations and not just the ones that historically are getting it on a consistent basis, just to make it fair. But I think I just wanted to be on the record too, speaking on that. And it's not, again, we're not talking about punishing anybody. We're just talking about how we can make sure that the community is seeing the investment. Because if we want a lot of these things to decline, essentially, because it was brought up, the criminal activity, resources are necessary. And when we live in the poorest district, and we have the poorest districts in Massachusetts, the poorest districts in Massachusetts, I want to repeat that again for everyone that's hearing. We have three zip codes that are the poorest districts, and it has to do with services. It has to do with job. And when we cut 800,000 because of the pandemic, which I understand, you know, we can't have summer jobs. There's children, there's kids, there's teenagers out there that have no employment, that we can do something visionary, we can do something great to make sure that some of those folks, regardless of what it is, we can do something that makes sense for the community. But with that being said, because those two programs are 1.6 million. I know we're talking about 200,000 and another 800 from yesterday. But essentially, with the racial and equity program, if that's what they're trying to build, and if we're going to communicate and conversate about this, I think there has to be more folks at the table talking about what are the resources that actually can be controlled by the community, that go to the community, and not necessarily have an authoritarian standpoint or militarized point of view. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez. So Counsel Whitfield, it looks like you have the final hand up in the queue. So we'll let you wrap us up unless someone else wants to speak, and then we'll take a vote on the motion.
I hope that we can move forward from here. But I just wanted to say, I get emotional when it comes to community and resources. But I also wanted to say that repeat offenders come in all forms. And so it's just not the repeat violent offenders on the street, there's repeat offenders in the police department that has committed crimes over and over and over again, that the city has paid 800,000, a million dollars in lawsuits. And then we can go, I have a list of the lawsuits we've paid out in the last 10 years. And it's way more than this 200,000 that we're asking just to get these officers trained to know how to deal with the community. So Counsel Davila, I am not for repeat offenders. But I am looking to get the resources and the training that these officers need to maybe prevent them from being repeat offenders. Repeat offenders come in all forms. So we're not just going to sit here and target one specific class. Let's talk about the repeat offenders at hand. And these are the ones that we're trying to get training for so that we don't use taxpayers' money, and I'm a taxpayer, money to pay for the crimes that they're committing. And it's just an unjust situation. So we need this 200,000, which is not a lot of money. And as Counselor Ramos stated, if the police department needs more money in the future and overtime, we usually have free cash, Counsel Fenton, and that's where some of that revenue goes. It goes to free cash if we don't spend it based on budget allocation. So we usually have free cash to reallocate to overtime and these services. So they will get done. We're not cutting anything. This is not a penalty. This is to get training that has been needed. I mean, we got to make up. We got to make up. There's not just the Nathan Bill. There's Delano Walker Jr. There's Benjamin Schofield. There's cases that people don't know about, things that happened to people in my family that folks don't even hear about. So it's not just one isolated incident that we're talking about here. There was no justice for Delano Walker Jr., 15-year-old boy. He was a boy that was killed because there wasn't the right training, there wasn't enough de-escalation training. So let's talk about the fact at hand that more training is needed. 200,000 is not a lot. It's not going to go as far as we would, we think it's going to go. And 125,000 of what the mayor proposed is going to outreach work to get to the root of gun violence. It's not for training. So let's also make that clear. And I, and I yield, I will not have another comment.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield, Counselor Williams, followed by Counselor Davila.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just.
Can they speak?
I just have one question. Um, I just have one question for the mayor, uh, if I, if I, if I may. I I don't know where the potential, where this vote lies in in regards to, uh, the passage. But if this, the two hundred or whatever number goes through, and, um, of course, that bypasses the one twenty-five split that you have proposed, Mr. Mayor. I just want to ask, um, will you demonstrate a good faith effort to put money towards the training um, that you have included in part of that one twenty-five? Or any other additional training that will be, I think will be necessary to, of course, provide the right education and instruction to these officers who are serving our community? So I just wanted to ask that for the record.
Well, I I think I answered that question by creating the first, uh, office of racial equality, equity in the city's history. And also, I just have to clarify a point that Counselor Gomez mentioned. That grant comes from the state.
I I'm sorry, I I'm sorry. I I just answered the question that I asked. I understand the office, Mr. Mayor, I understand the office, but what I'm asking is.
But I'm looking to clarify, I'm not being recognized by the council president, so misinformation is out there, you can clarify. But to your point, I think we made a bold statement here by creating that office. Now, again, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, as Helen is putting the program together, it's not a split of one twenty-five, one twenty-five. The program is being put together. And we wanted to continue these training, sensitivity, mental health, cultural diversity, not only for the community, officers dealing with the community, but in-house. So I made that, I made the motion to get the one twenty-five from the police department. Again, cabinet heads, departments never want the money taken away. But I wanted to diversify, move it out of the police department, as Mr. Black, when I spoke about a few weeks ago, if not longer, on shifting some of the burden and getting to the root cause. So this is a start, and I think Mr. Colton Harris can tell you on that. It's a start by creating office and wanting to give it some seed money as we continue to grow this office. But the one twenty-five, we're all on the same page about the training. I I'm not gonna, I I'm with you on that. Police can handle that readjustment of the money and plus the one twenty-five and we're putting the two fifty. More than that, it comes, I bet, to Mr. Point Blank, it becomes difficult. As Counselor Davila, Davila had asked also, she can be able to move the department forward with the one twenty-five cut. More than that is is a detriment. So I am committed to continue to move forward in this office of racial equity and make that announcement here in two weeks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll take that as a yes.
Thank, thank you, uh, Counselor Williams, uh, Counselor Davila. Looks like you have the final hand in the queue, sir, before we take this vote. Um, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm gonna be brave because we have a very robust conversation on this. But I do want to just to quickly clear, so there's no misunderstanding, uh, everybody understands where, uh, Counselor Davila is. Uh, now, I agree with, uh, the counselors. Uh, I have had many conversations with particularly, I have much, uh, commissioner, I have explained to her before that in my opinion, I don't understand how there's officers that still remain employed in the police department. And I'm not talking, I'm talking about, like, like you say, the key officer who violates people's rights, who do commit crime. But that's, just to clear that up. With that being said, where I do stand with the mayor is that, uh, we, we have some characters out there who are truly violent. And as I said before, uh, this has many, many heights, many reasons, many root causes, while it is being poverty and injustice, of course. And so, um, as I'm talking, I'm thinking of, uh, it was last summer, two summers ago, we had a case and somebody was crucified. Crucified because of a drug deal gone wrong. That person is definitely violent, should not be walking the streets. So I I, just to be clear on that, uh, I I, we're gonna get to the racial office, uh, in a, in a little while. It is my hope we will conclude that today. Um, I understand where the mayor is, uh, one twenty-five. Uh, I do feel that perhaps the mayor, I, it might be difficult, but we can, uh, if we pass this two thousand, two thousand, two hundred thousand as revised, I'm sure that difference, I don't think it's that much, that could be reallocated for somewhere else, including vehicle or any other resource. Uh, but I do think also that we need to send, uh, a clear message that, uh, we ha- we have expectations for the police department. And to me, this would be my statement. I said, for those reasons, and after clarifying those. Uh, and by the way, this is a hard vote for me because I do am very concerned with, uh, safety overall. So this is a difficult vote for me, but in in a show of solidarity to make a statement that we have expectations that will be supporting Counselor Whitfield's, um, motion.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. Madam Clerk, on the amendment of two hundred thousand dollars, uh, can you please call the roll?
Do we have a second?
We did have a second. It was seconded by Counselor Gomez.
On the amendment to cut two hundred thousand dollars from.
We can mute our device.
If it happens on live TV.
Counselor Gomez on the motion?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Counselor Fenton?
No.
No. Counselor Kirin?
No.
No. Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh? Counselor Walsh, you're muted.
I'm a no.
No. Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Allen?
No.
Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown?
No.
Counselor Hurst?
Yes, the amendment is approved. Uh, if there are no questions from the council or any other amendments, then we will take a vote on the budget itself. Saying no.
Wait, wait, I'm in the, uh.
Okay, Counselor Allen, sorry.
Sorry, uh, thank you, Mr.
Sorry, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was prepared to make a a proposed, you know, the proposed cut of one twenty-five, uh, as I mentioned, um, you know, a while ago. Um, so that's why I had my hand in the queue, but there was one other reason, uh, there's no point in that cutting out because we we were just cut, it was just cut two hundred thousand. So I was in in favor of the one twenty-five that was the proposal from, um, I believe from three counselors last week and also from the mayor. But obviously, there's been a lot of discussion since then. So, um, that was the one reason I had my hand up. And the other reason is, uh, I was in a conversation with Counselor Letterman this afternoon, around one thirty, and we were talking about the budget. And he talked about, um, wished there was a way to do a jobs program. So we talked about it for a few minutes. It came, it was his idea. Um, but I had the time this afternoon to work on it. So some conversations were had between me and TJ, and I believe TJ had some more conversations beyond him, uh, which he's prepared to talk about. Um, and I'm not sure it requires any budget move, but the general idea was, could we, in this time when things are so hard for people, et cetera, could we come up with some summer jobs for people that would clean our city and that would give them some, some basic money, a a job for the summer? Um, the number we were talking about was a hundred and fifty thousand. I'm gonna ask, uh, TJ to speak to it and also Jesse, I'm sure will probably want to say something on it, uh, because it was, uh, his idea. And and maybe if we could, uh, I'm not sure it requires a budget move tonight, but I thought it was a note that, um, where we've, we've struggled with four hours on two items the last two nights. Uh, maybe we can, uh, have an item which we all agree and, uh, and uh, an an item to addition to the training that we have voted to have for the police, et cetera, um, that we can have a a jobs program if we can pull this off. So I'm gonna just hand the ball to TJ and Jesse, you're certainly welcome to talk about it. It was originally your idea.
Mr. President, I, we'd love to do a jobs program. A lot of the jobs, everything has been because of COVID nineteen coronavirus, making it very difficult, whether it's the REE or mask works, assuming job programs because of the stipulations on that. I know what we've been able to do for residents, those two million dollars to help them pay their mortgages and their rents and utilities, not the business community, but to a safe age, that's a kid's job. A lot of that has gone by the wayside because of COVID nineteen coronavirus and the, uh, regulations. Even past Sullivan, Helen spoke about the restrictions that are on that. I don't know how realistic that could be and what criteria, because there are many restrictions now with the COVID nineteen and, uh, the coronavirus, age requirements. You you made it, but I, the programs that we always announced in working with, uh, VAS was REE, but now mask works, those have all been curtailed. I I just want to be realistic. I've always been forward and we've always been able to do something, but a lot of those have gone by the, uh, the wayside right now. But TJ, if you want to clarify.
Yeah, so, uh, Counselor Allen, we are working with. There is a way we can bring jobs back. We certainly plan to do something, uh, but we're struggling finding out, uh, during COVID, how many I'm gonna actually bring back. Uh, but we're, we're gonna continue working on it over the course of the next couple of weeks and report back to the city council.
I'd love to be able to do it. Love to.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Allen. Was that, was that sufficient?
Yeah, if I, if I could just, uh, so TJ, what are the next steps? Right, you know, we had identified some money and we're trying to come up with some job descriptions and there were some logistical issues. Could you just speak a little to that so people know that there was, that the conversation went a little ways?
Yeah, so, uh, you know, after we had a conversation, I saw a path to options. And he wanted to do it. He's trying to figure out creative ways to get people to work. You know, there's logistical issues to the aid, uh, being able to use machinery, there's logistic issues of transportation, uh, not having too many, uh, people and vehicles going to different parks. But we're still gonna work through a lot of those, uh, logistics.
Okay. Cap, thank you.
I might just add, TJ, I don't think the the budget number that you're talking about is the concern. I think it's the issues around, uh, dealing with the, uh, emergency orders and the, uh, uh, COVID-related issues. Uh, but I certainly can do the the budget number.
But I'd love, Mr. President, I'd love to be able to do it, but it's the director's indicated that we're dealing with the COVID nineteen coronavirus, all the restrictions. They always love to be able to do summer jobs for our young people. That's why you see the main programs with the REE, now mask works, that hasn't occurred either. He's, but unable to do it. Well, but if we could figure out a way, even if it's monthly too, and we're able to buy by those COVID nineteen, coronavirus restrictions, and and there is something that gets with the apartment requirements that can be done legally, I'd love to do it, but I'm just trying to, we're trying to be realistic. So on the council, we're on the same page. Thank you to our directorship. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Allen. I do see Counselor Fenton and Counselor Ramos have your hands raised in the queue. Uh, this is on the budget itself. Counselor Fenton?
Thank you, uh, Mr. President, and, uh, thanks, Counselor Allen, for that, um, good suggestion. I just want to, um, go back to a point that I made earlier with TJ and and Counselor Whitfield, um, had responded. And and this is about the the impact on the revenue budget when we make a cut on the expense budget. I, I mean, I'm always wanting to learn more about this, I'm about everything and particularly, um, city stuff. So I just want to make sure that we understand exactly how it works. My, my, my understanding, TJ, and correct me if I'm wrong, and Counselor Whitfield, you chime in too. My understanding is that the budget comes with an expense number, not a revenue number. And let's just say that it's an even hundred dollars that we're gonna spend this year. If you cut two dollars out of that hundred dollars, uh, you now have only ninety-eight dollars that you're gonna have for, uh, expenses. You can't then raise more money than that ninety-eight dollars. That's not where the free cash comes from. Free cash comes when you have a budget for ninety-eight dollars and you have some open positions or some expenses that you had in the budget that don't ultimately end up getting spent. Um, that money then, at the end of the year, whatever you spent, less than ninety-eight, is free cash and can be used for other things. But when you cut two dollars out of the hundred, you also have the impact on the revenue side. You're not then gonna raise a hundred dollars even though you cut two dollars out of the expense budget. TJ, is that right or am I missing something?
So the only difference would be with.
TJ, can you speak into the mic, TJ, because you're breaking up, uh, in this situation, then?
We actually allocated additional revenue, so we had, we raised a limited revenue and reallocated it. Uh, would be the only way that to to do what, uh, to do that. But if you cut it, it is gone unless we just increase the revenue estimates based upon, you know, whatever, and then reallocate. It needs to be re-appropriate. That's why we put in the the two hundred and fifty thousand in it to have you vote on it. Right now, that two hundred thousand dollars you cut, as we stated priorly, and Michael, Counselor Fenton stated very eloquently, it's gone. That money's gone. So that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Fen- I'm sorry, go ahead. Did you still have something to say, Mr. Mayor?
That money.
Well, 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 he asked me, he asked me if I wanted to speak as well.
So I certainly will defer to Counselor Whitfield, um, but let me just make. Yeah, let me just make sure he's finished.
I'm done.
You're done? Okay, okay.
I also wanted.
You guys are breaking up a little bit there, so I can't, um. I I can't always gather whether you're finished or not, uh, Counselor Whitfield.
Thank you. I wanted to add, to get to a balanced budget, you have to have a certain number for revenue that equals expenses. So the revenue budget is hypothetical anyway. We don't know that we're gonna generate the whole seven hundred and whatever thousand that they, they said that we were gonna generate. But if we generate more than the balanced budget, what do you think happens to that amount that we generate? It goes somewhere, and I believe that's the free cash, TJ. Is that correct or no?
That's correct too, Tracy. You're right.
So, in essence, it will go to free cash, but I do understand what the mayor's saying. And I do understand what TJ's saying that when it, when it, when we cut it, it's it's gone. But we can reallocate, um, or we can still approve money going to. So in in essence, the mayor doesn't have to transfer, um, a hundred and twenty-five out of free cash. He can transfer less because he cut two hundred. But, um, yeah, I understand both points and I can understand why it's confusing to the council.
No, that's not, no, you, you know, free cash comes in very late in the year. The two hundred thousand dollars is gone. That's why I put before you the quarter of a million dollars with an approved legally statutory that you can do plus a one twenty-five in the budget.
Mayor, when free cash come in, can it be transferred to a budget item, to a line item in the budget? When when we do get free cash at the end of the year, can we not take free cash and transfer it to a budget line item?
But that is gone, that comes at the end of the year.
Yeah, but it doesn't matter when it happens. It can happen, right?
You're, yes, you can, but it's going to the end of the fiscal year. Now, if we, if, again, we're in the middle of a pandemic, heaven's full of economy, state, federal, local aid, local revenue coming in, who knows if there's gonna be any free cash. So this was a cleaner way to do it, uh, as pointed out by Counselor Fenton, of the one twenty-five plus the one twenty-five. Statutory, we meet all the criteria, we move, whether on the training. Now, at this point in time, the two hundred thousand dollars you cut is gone, is gone. I'm just speaking on on financial, I'm not a financial wizard, just the basic knowledge I have on it, that money's gone.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. Thank you, uh, Mayor, um, Counselor Ramos on the budget before we vote, uh, followed by Counselor Davila.
Mr. President, I have a question related to MGM, but before I ask that, I just want to go back to what was mentioned earlier. Are we talking about summer jobs? Is that what we were? I was confused about what was mentioned. Because I I I mentioned, I I had mentioned last week and I mentioned yesterday that I would like to see some of this money allocated, some of the money that we are, that we just cut, reallocated for summer jobs. some of the money that we are, that we just cut, reallocated for summer jobs, and so if there are any discussions related to summer jobs or to jobs for the youth, I would love to be involved. I haven't heard anything, so please keep me in the loop, as that was a recommendation that I made last week and yesterday. So my, but my question is relative to MGM, Mr. President. For other people, the, the, the many, many residents of the city of Springfield who have continued to ask us, where does the MGM money go? Can you please give us a brief and simple explanation, TJ, as to where exactly the revenue from MGM is going? Are we using that money to balance this budget? What are, where exactly is the MGM money going?
It is going to the general fund of revenue, as is prescribed by law, to be part of the overall revenue budget of the $728 million budget presented before you.
Is that, is that MGM revenue being used to balance this budget?
Yes. We have a 40-year agreement with MGM that they're going to pay us based upon the contract host community agreement.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Ramos. Counselor Davila, no longer see your hand raising the queue.
Uh, no, I think so.
Okay. Counselor Walsh.
No, that was correct.
You did have it, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, the hand, yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. My question is for TJ, just two, two quick questions. Piggy, uh, piggyback, piggy, uh, back, following up with Counselor Ramos, MGM question, can you tell us what happened to the $2 million balance due from MGM that we didn't get paid for?
What happened to it?
Yeah, we got that money that actually, because they made a partial payment, right? And they had a balance of 2 millions.
They didn't pay a full payment of $2.3 million that we're currently going to be in negotiations with them, and we still hold, hold fast that we're entitled to that money.
Okay, so.
That's not paying, but we're still going to be in active negotiations with them.
Okay, so this budget, does that reflect that potential revenue?
This budget reflects payment from MGM as, as it's, as it's in the host community agreement. We have not had any, with them about anything beyond that, and we, our contract has MGM International backing up MGM Springfield to, to pay it, so that's, until I hear otherwise from our city attorney or others, that that's how we're going.
And do we feel comfortable going to recoup that money or do we have to light a candle?
I'll, I'll report back to the council, that'll be no more.
Okay, all right. And my last question, TJ, before we vote on this budget and doing my two contributions, can you, is there anything new in terms of any potential negative revenue effect from the state as relates to the revenue shortfall because of the pandemic?
No, that's why we're doing an austerity budget that the place will look more or less until we get more indication from the state. We've got 15% out of general, unrestricted general government aid, and then if they level fund it, that's going to be the 200, a few million dollars to the good for us. If they go anything deeper than 15%, we're going to be having a different conversation.
Right, right. Do you remember you said, you did say that before, but that was quite a few weeks ago, I just wondered if there's new information that the council should know, at least from the start, before I took a vote. Thank you, and I do, again, Mr. Mayor, I do think on a complimentary basis, yes, I for doing a budget that does not have core services reduction or layoffs, so I sincerely said to you, thank you for that, for TJ and all the team that put this together, and I do plan to vote in favor of that.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Davila, Counselor Walsh, followed by Counselor Letterman on the budget.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am speaking on the budget. I am going to support the budget as presented. It protects core services and I'm really, really happy that there are no layoffs. I know other communities, particularly in the field of education, are looking at a lot of layoffs, so, and I also think that the, the new office that the mayor has proposed actually reflects a lot of the concerns in the country and the city today, and will do a long way to address some of the issues that we are all facing, so I'm a yes on the budget.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh, Counselor Letterman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to revisit the conversation we were having a moment ago, and I know it might be uncomfortable, but I think we need to understand fully what the implication is. You know, the vote that was taken a moment ago to cut the $200,000 from the, well, the intent is from overtime, but I understand it's the full line item, you know, was taken because I think a number of counselors, and I appreciated their, their comments, want to see increased training or increase to the 125 that's appro, that are proposed before us momentarily, that appropriation, and, you know, I, to the conversation around the amount of revenue that we now raise as a result of the budget, I think we need to clarify that, because I don't think anybody is looking to make a cut simply for the sake of a cut, and right now it looks like we have a $75,000 difference in the amount of money that's going to be raised. We're about to vote on an appropriation that'll do 125 in favor of that training and 125 in favor, towards the, or 250 total for the Office of Racial Equity. But my question to our legal counsel and to TJ is for counselors that, that are hopeful to see that training number increase on that side, certainly it's, it's the administration that makes that increase, we can't appropriate funds, but what are the options that the administration has, not necessarily that they, I'm not asking them to commit to take those steps, but what are the options they have to increase that appropriation that we are about to take up so that we do raise that revenue and it can be put towards the Office of Racial Equity?
Counselor, so, yeah, the council cannot add to the budget per mass general law, they can only reduce or reject or approve, so right now, as it stands, unless the mayor puts a financial order with estimated revenue of $75,000 for the council to put it into the training budget, it is cut from the budget.
And by when would that type of a financial order need to come in order for us to still be able to raise the necessary revenue?
Because it could come as soon as July, August, whenever we feel comfortable that the revenue is there and that, that's something that the mayor wants to do.
Yeah, I'm not going to make any commitment, as TJ indicated, I'm going to make sure the revenue was there, got to be realistic, the revenue is there, can be booked at. You, you have to understand, we're, we're dealing with this COVID-19 coronavirus and tracking everything, going for reimbursement, that's why, you know, been able to balance the last six positions without using any reserves, that's why this division here is 12 years in all independent, looked at our award-winning financial division. I'm not going to say, yeah, let's do it, and, and I hope and pray with a $0.75, $750, $7.5 million is going to come in. That's why we went with a very austere budget pool, with I think is 11.3, 11.8 on the 15% is not, and then turn around and go, well, we, we thought we were going to get the money, but I'm going to point the finger at the state or the fest, not going to do that. So what we had put forth, you already voted on it, it's a $200,000 cut, we had put forth for something that could be done, a 125 cut plus 125 within the budget. I'm just following the financial statutes here. You cut the 200, it's gone. You know, everything you're mentioning now is hypothetical, that's why I thought this was a very good way in working together, legally and financially it can be done, you know, if there's free cash, well, free cash might not roll into the end of the fiscal year, if it does, we don't know, we've been managing well, but I don't know what's going to happen if the economy continues to downturn, so I, I just, again, this is financial laws. You've cut the 200, the 200,000 is, is gone now. I mean, I'll try to consider what I can, but I thought I could make a good compromise there, and again, no cabinet, no department wants money taken away from here, she, but I was, felt it was important to create this new office, moving on the city of racial equity and put some seed money there, and that's why I asked TJ, he hasn't made it, I want an appropriation, I want to cut to the budget, put it before the council.
Mr. President, if I may, to the mayor's point, I appreciate you, Mr. Mayor, for, for answering the question, I think what I'm trying to understand is the $200,000 cut that was just made, the $200,000 cut that was made out of that line item that included overtime, we are about to vote on, per your financial order, an additional appropriation now of 125, so we're bringing back $125,000 on the expense side, as Counsel Fenton had put, as Counsel Whitfield and TJ have put it, we're bringing back 125 on the expense side and the other 125 as well for a total of 250. My question is, through that process, what, what counselors seem to want to see is an increase of $75,000 towards the training budget, and my question is, for whoever can answer it, whether it's Mr. Mayor or TJ or the legal counsel, is simply per that same process, how, you know, because we're talking, you're talking about future revenue, if we approve the budget here tonight, you're talking about looking for future revenue that may or may not come, I'm saying, how do we include on the expense side, either tonight or whenever, that $75,000 as we are about to do with the next financial order so that that training can actually get done, because as I said, nobody is here to support cuts for the sake of cuts. I'm not, we're trying to hopefully see some more funding go towards training, that my colleagues have made salient points as, as feeling is necessary, and I also agree that in the future we can revisit overtime as we have in the past, when we do know where we are in, 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 in the future, but my question is, and I, I'm not saying, I'm not asking you to commit to do it, I'm just trying to understand what could be done to make sure that that 75K is raised back and could theoretically be allocated to the training that councils are seeking.
TJ, can you address that, please?
The process would be a supplemental budget that's filed by the mayor, similar to the $250,000 supplemental budget filed for the new office created in HHS, and that's the same exact way, and it'd have to be done before the tax rate is set.
So it would have to be done before, we, we set the tax rate typically in December?
November, December.
November, December, so we, that is, that is, that is the conversations that I would hope we can continue to have now in the Public Safety Committee and in the, in the Public Safety Committee and in the Finance Committee. Thank you for clarifying that, because I want to be very clear, you know, I, we, no one is here to support cuts for the sake of cuts, what we're here is to, is to speak on, negotiate respectfully with the administration on, on what counselors feel the priorities need to be in consultation with the community, and we respect that also, you have the priorities in your consultation with the community, so I just wanted to make sure we were all clear on the process, I wanted to be more clear on the process, and I am hopeful that, that those conversations can take place. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman, Counselor Whitfield, it looks like you have the last hand up in the queue before we vote on the budget.
Thank you. I just want to be clear to everybody that the revenue that they're talking about is hypothetical, hypothetical numbers anyway, there's no concrete saying what we're going to get from the state, saying how much we're going to get in property taxes, hypothetical based on historical trends, and we don't know how much we're going to get in revenue based on coronavirus and these other factors, so I have to agree with that, but TJ, I have a question for you, since we already cut $200, the proposal on the table to transfer the additional 125 is going to be an additional 125 cut from overtime budget?
Oh, the functional.
Personal services, I'm sorry?
Overtime is going to go down by, well, personal service is going to go down by 200,000, and then you're going to appropriate $250,000 on the order, that's come, on order number five, and then that, so you'll reduce the budget by 200,000 and then you'll increase the budget by, by 250,000, that's how it's going to be funded.
So in essence, we could probably reduce the free cash that's going in instead of, because the two.
Yeah, so that's how, obviously, a lot of the free cash, um, number, it's just going to be estimated, right now it's just estimated revenue as the generic title, because the revenue hasn't been set yet, so that's kind of the, you know, so in that sense, you're right, the hypothetical kind of way is that it's our best thinking at this time, and it's just going to, that's why you read it as estimated revenue as the way to do it, so we didn't have to muddy up the, the cut plus this on the balance sheet to have a similar effect of what we're trying to accomplish.
So the 800,000 that was cut yesterday, there will be no reallocation of those funds, that's just cut from the budget?
That is just cut from the budget until I have a conversation with the city council about supplemental appropriation or to, to go after recouping some of those funds for the firing range.
All right, I do appreciate that, so I would ask that, when you ask for that supplemental budget that we do look at the additional 75,000, because this is what the community is asking for, this is not something that we are just trying to be malicious and do, and I, I want to reiterate that this is not, this is to incentivize training, it had nothing personal to do against any officer, but I just wanted to be clear that the money's not just gone, because that's the message that I keep hearing, that the money is just gone, is, is, is out of the budget right now, but you're going to come back to us to reappropriate some of that, that cut, is, is that accurate?
It's gone unless the mayor files, files a.
Supplemental budget.
Budget for the need, for the needs, so, and otherwise, if the 800, if any of that dollar cut stands, and we're not going to want to hear this, it would impact Pat Sullivan's budget and facilities if we can't get an appropriation for the firing.
It's going to affect Pat Sullivan's budget?
If we don't, if I, if we don't file a supplemental budget and get an agreement off of the firing range, yes.
So Pat Sullivan suffers because the administration decided to increase the facility's budget? No, not Pat Sullivan, let's say the constituents and the residents of the community will suffer because the facility budget maintains public buildings that the constituents use, so the constituents, Pat Sullivan's budget has to suffer because the administration added $800,000 to the budget without having a discussion with the city council, signed contracts and did all this, when we could have had a conversation prior to any of this and, and got clear understanding, so Pat Sullivan's budget has to suffer? I don't agree with that at all.
No, it stays there. Stay law, stay by.
Because the constituents will know, they will know, they will be made aware that if services, if services decrease, decline in the facilities of any, any of these facilities or any of the services for Clean City or any of that, they will know why.
Yeah, because the city council cut the budget.
No, because the mayor's administration added money without being transparent, without communicating with the city council what this money was going to be used for.
All, all the.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield, thank you, Mr. Mayor, it seems to me that you both have expressed your views on it, it seems to me that we should move on. Counselor Ramos, I see your hand is raised in the queue.
President, I wasn't planning on speaking again, I was looking forward to taking a vote and moving on, however, I'm, I'm bothered again by what was mentioned just now relative to Pat Sullivan's facilities budget. TJ, you were right when you said, you know, we don't want to hear it, because we don't want to hear it, and we don't want to hear that Pat Sullivan's budget is going to get cut. We cut $800,000 from the facilities budget relative to the gun firing range, has nothing, absolutely nothing to do with Pat Sullivan's services, that has absolutely nothing to do with facilities, it has to do with that, and you know what, Mr. President, I've been wondering why, and I mentioned this yesterday, you know, typically this isn't the way that this sort of financial order is presented to the city council, it's typically presented to the city council as a, as a separate financial order so that we can discuss it, et cetera, et cetera, and I was wondering why, why it was put into the budget this way, but I think it's become clear to me that this was intentional, the way that it was put into the budget, to intentionally, again, as, as always been done, back the councils back to the wall, make us feel as if our backs are to the wall, that we have to support this or is the end of the world, and, you know, I'm tired of voting that way, I'm tired of having to rubber stamp everything because we have to pass this, because otherwise Pat Sullivan is going to suffer and his department and the constituents, you know, that's not the way to govern, that's not the way to govern, you know, this should have been transparent, you shouldn't have been trying to sneak this into the budget, sneak it past us without being transparent and being honest, and that's the consequences of, of, of trying to sneak it into the budget and not being completely honest and upfront with the city council. We didn't cut facilities, we cut the gun range, bottom line.
Thank you, Counselor Ramos, since there are no hands raised in the queue on the budget, Madam Clerk.
On approving the general fund FY21 budget.
Counselor Gompoe. Counselor Gompoe.
I said yes, while I was getting cut off.
Can't hear it to Sheena.
Good luck then, yes?
Yes. Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Curry?
Yes.
Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown? Counselor Brown?
Counselor Brown?
Mr. President?
I I can't find him.
Mr. President, I believe the mayor is trying to get your attention.
Counselor Brown?
Counselor Brown, absent. Counselor Hurst?
Yes, the budget is approved FY21. Madam Clerk, will you please call the next item on the agenda?
Thank you, Counselors.
The next item on the agenda is FY21 budget order, Enterprise Fund.
Is anyone present to speak to this item?
Mr. President, this is just the vote to set up the Enterprise Fund budget for the trash. EPW to pick up the trash for fiscal year 21, 10.1 million.
Excuse me, Mr. President, it's awfully hard to hear.
I don't know what's happening with with your communication on your end, TJ, but if we could just try to speak into the microphone as best you can, it'd be greatly appreciated.
So this, this is to set up the Enterprise Fund for FY21. I'm setting aside $10.1 million for EPW to pick up solid waste.
Any questions or comments on the order from the council? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
On approving the budget order for the Enterprise Fund, Counselor Gompo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Curry?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown?
Absent.
Counselor Hurst?
Yes, the order is approved. Madam Clerk, will you please call the next item on the agenda?
Thank you, Counselors.
The next item on the agenda is FY21 budget order revolving funds.
Mr. President, this is the annual reallocation of the revolving funds that the city had that needs to be authorized by the city council. The handicap parking fund, the tube street parking fund, the light removal fund, park banquet facilities, student school department, student technology fund.
Thank you, TJ. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mr. President, if I, I was trying to get my hand up.
Oh, I'm Counselor Davila.
Thank you. Just a quick question. I'm looking at.
I'm back, Mr. President. Thank you.
Okay.
I was just looking here.
It's coming around to you now, soon as Counselor Davila finishes speaking.
Yes, I'm just trying to figure out here, we have a light remover, we have, I'm having amounts, oh yeah, two, sorry, 200,000. What does that, what does that buy us, 200,000? Is that equipment? Is that?
It's actually to clean up lighted properties.
Yes. Light, oh, lighted properties?
Yeah.
Oh, TJ, I can barely hear you.
Lighted properties, clean up lighted properties.
Okay, that's when the city goes in and they they clean up the the property?
Correct. Orders here, clean them up overboard.
Can you just say it one more time? I think.
Yeah, you could.
Mr. Mayor.
It's to clean up lighted properties.
Right, what is that? Is that residential homes that the city has to go and clean up?
Properties that a court ordered to be cleaned up.
All throughout the city.
Revenue from, from a, we put leaves on the house.
All right, thank you, TJ.
Seeing that there are no further questions, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll on this order?
Counselor Gompo?
Yes.
Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Counselor Curry?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor.
Yes, the order is approved. And Madam Clerk, if you'll just indulge me for a second, I know that Counselor Brown probably wanted to go on record as voting on the budget, considering that we're in this new technological world where it's quite possible that people can lose internet connection. My hope is that we can record Counselor Brown as either making a yes or a no vote, considering the circumstances. So Counselor Brown, on approving the FY21 budget, i- if if you could either give a yes or a no on that budget?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. If we could work with whoever we need to work with to ensure Counselor Brown gets recorded, it would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Going out, Mr. President. Thank you.
Absolutely. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is FY21 budget, supplemental budget order, Office of Racial Equity.
Is anyone present to speak to this item?
Yeah, this is a technical, as we discussed it in great detail, this is the supplemental budget to create the Office of Racial Equity in Calhoun Harris's shop. We're looking for approval.
Counselor Ramos?
Just a quick question, who, how is that office going to be staffed? And have we, have we chosen the people or are we going to be opening up for applications?
Commissioner Helen Calhoun Harris is going to speak on this. Counselor Ramos, thank you. She's in the midst of putting this together, but we didn't want a hesitated rate, so that's why I wanted to put the appropriation in. So Helen can speak briefly on it as we, the Office of Racial Equity evolves. Is it, Mr. President?
Yes, absolutely.
The Office of Racial Equity is going to be an office that is in the Department of Health and Human Services. There is no staff that has been chosen for the office. We expect that we will start off with one staff. That staff position will be posted. I am in the process of working on a job description. However, the goals of the department, I have done some work on, they may need to be enhanced, but it is to strengthen and build bridges across the city of Springfield and across social identities, to provide a theoretical foundation and understanding of the system of oppression, to explore what bias looks like in the work environment, and sharpen our skills in addressing those comments, to develop personal commitments for social awareness and change, and to enjoy ourselves while tackling challenging conversations. As you know, the definition of oppression is the conscious and unconscious attitudes, behaviors directed towards a subordinate group coupled with the power and privilege of the advantaged group manifested at individual cultural and institutional levels. Oppression is historically rooted and systematically supported. It is a system that benefits some at the expense of others. That is the definition of oppression. I talked to you a little bit about the goals. The other thing that we are looking at is looking at microaggressions. Microaggressions are the everyday verbal, nonverbal, and environmental slights, snubs, and insults, whether done intentionally or not, communicate hostile, derogatory, or negative messages to people in marginalized groups. And so we need to realize that microaggressions are unconscious manifestation of a worldview of inclusion, exclusion, superiority, inferiority. Thus, our major task is to make the invisible visible. And so those are some of the components that I am working on. I am also working on additional trainings that I think the community may want to see as a part of this office. Again, I am working on the job descriptions, but I have articulated to you, counselors, the goals of the office. I have articulated microaggressions and oppression, and that will be some of the foundation that we'll use. In addition, we will use public health data. We will use what we know about marginalized communities and those areas that we need to enhance in order to have positive health outcomes. We know what health disparities look like. We know some of them come from the language that I just used. And so we will be, we will be tying this all with data and data outcomes to ensure that we are working with marginalized communities, underserved communities, in order to get the best health outcomes, but in order to address the issue of racial equity in the city of Springfield.
Thank you, Helen.
I definitely appreciate that description, and I just want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for putting this together. I know that we weren't, we haven't been able to agree on some other issues tonight. However, I do commend you for making this effort and creating this office, which I hope will make a difference for the people in the city of Springfield during these times, during this pandemic, and given the the climate on police accountability nationally. You know, people want to see us working together. People want to see government working together. They don't want to see us at all butting heads and fighting over this and that. And so I'm hopeful that we'll be, this is something that we will be able to work together on. I invite you, Commissioner, to 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 join us in a subcommittee meeting so that we could talk about this more thoroughly. But again, I just want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for putting this together, and and I support it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ramos. Counselor Davila?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Mayor, I understand what you are trying to do here, and I think you deserve credit for for trying at this. You know, you're responding to to a very serious problem that we have in the city and our nation, as a matter of fact, racial inequality, how it affects in all your daily life or financial life or health, for that matter. But I do have some questions, and maybe somebody could chime in, but how much, and I realize this is in the process of being developed, do we know how much we're going to be paying on salaries on this office?
Not at this point in time. Again, the balance, maybe, there's been some training, but we want to, and I want to get that street workers program also going, and Darrell Moss has been working very closely with Commissioner Helen Calhoun Harris in that case, the Sheriff's Department, two-pronged approach. The training is the cultural help. Again, we spoke about this daily, every day, with the disparities we were seeing with black and brown individuals for the COVID-19 coronavirus. So this sort of evolved, and then it's moved very quickly. So I, diversity, the sensitivity training, the cultural training, but then also deal with, face urban America now, since this uptick with gun and gang violence, and how we could, those are the streets. So Helen's formulated formulating that, and this is just the start, actually, the start of it. So we don't have, we basically need really a lot of training first, and then we want to do the, in some limited positions, the street, the street workers, free credit. I mean, this is, you're going to be out there. Helen, I don't know if you want to elaborate a little more.
No, I'm happy, I'm happy to answer questions based on the framework that I just articulated. I'm happy to answer questions that.
Thank you for your answer, Mr. Mayor. Just to follow up, if I could, so so we don't know how much we're going to be paying salaries, and I do believe we're going to have six people for that office, is that correct?
I don't.
We're going, actually, one will start. We've talked briefly, assuming four when it comes to the street workers. This is all work in progress in the targeting areas, but again, a lot of the majority of the money and more money to come in the future is based on the sensitivity, cultural, the mental health, training, picking some stuff off the plate of the classroom, the police department, and I'm working in the street, the street work. This is, it's a work in progress right now.
Right, right. So that I'm clear, Mr. Mayor, so you said we're going to start initially with four people and then possibly add more as we continue?
You're going to start with one person.
One person.
Rachel Yops, under, dealing with Commissioner Helen Calhoun Harris, Attorney to Lead, the Air Chief Diversity Officer, that, the leisure, while we put it together, and then the street worker aspect will evolve as quickly as possible on the knocking down this uptick of gangs.
Okay. All right, all right, and my final question, I do have one more question, but I can loop around later, Mr. President. But my final question on this time, on this round is, maybe, Mr. Mayor, maybe I'm, maybe I'm not understanding something, I'm misunderstanding something, but I'm looking at the press relief that your office put out a while back, dated June 25th. And so specifically, I'm just going to ask you succinctly the question as I think it, what the, what does race have to do with gang activity? You go heavily into gang activity, which I agree is a problem altogether, but I'm just trying to make the connection between race and gang activity, and I don't see it.
There is, there is no connection. We've had, we have an uptick, there's been an uptick in urban America of gang and gun violence, and speaking with Helen, and also in speaking with the numerous community groups I've spoken to, a black leadership team, cabinet heads, the private heads here in the city of Springfield, private conversations, clergy, advocates, and the big thing about the training, but also can, we need to do more to stop some of this uptick of gun and gang violence. A missing component of that, is street workers, street workers. So I took it out of the police department, where it's usually, has been put in years and years ago, one under Health and Human Services. We're looking at this as a health, a health issue. So I wanted a little diversity creation. There was no race involved, doesn't matter to me, we just have to deal with, stop picking up game and gun violence, doesn't matter if it's.
Very well, very well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will loop around later, Mr. President, just a second.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. Counselor Williams?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to commend the administration for the acknowledgement that an office like this deserves to be in place, but I just have a question in relation to, I know, Mr. Mayor, you alluded to Attorney G. Can you please maybe expound on how she is going to interfacing with this department in her own job description?
So I have an opportunity, I am meeting with Attorney G. You are absolutely right. The Chief Diversity and Inclusion Officer is really essential to city government, and I just want to make a correlation that pretty much the work of Attorney G is internal, I believe, to government and has some external components, but it really, I believe, if I looked at the job description, was there, there is some ability to work together, and we certainly are going to do that, but there are specific roles and responsibilities as it relates to both offices. is really essential to city government. And I just want to make a correlation that pretty much the work of Attorney G is internal, I believe, to government and has some external components. But it really, I believe, if I looked at the job description, was there, there is some ability to work together, and we certainly are going to do that. But there are specific roles and responsibilities as it relates to both offices. The other thing I'll say is that the data is very clear. When you talk about there being no correlation between street outwork, outworkers, and race. The reality is that we look at the data, we look at substance use disorders, we look at individuals who are abusing tobacco and other drugs. If we look at obesity, if we look at public health indicators, a love start unit, then we really do understand that it is black and brown youth that are most impacted by those data outcomes. Now, the mayor, we're framing it around gangs and making sure, but it really is to be out on the streets and make sure that we are doing good prevention and intervention with those youth that are on the street, who we see every day in the data that really tells us that there needs to be intervention, not just with gun violence, which violence is a public health issue, but just in overall health for the youth in the city of Springfield. So there is a correlation and relationship. But Attorney G and I continue to meet to make sure that we have defined roles and responsibilities. And Mayor, I'll let you take it from there.
No, I'm, I'm good, I'm good. I appreciate the council's review and hopeful passage and your questions and working together on this. It's essential, and it's, it's new, and we're looking to make a big difference.
I appreciate those responses, definitely understood. And I just want to encourage maybe the administration to, there's a lot of work being done in the community already on the social determinants of health, for example, that I feel the city can lean on just a little bit more. I know, for example, Bay State has done a lot of work in this area, such as, as well as Wayfinders, too. You know, of course, in drafting grant proposals, speaking to the very issues that Commissioner you laid out. So, you know, it seems though, you know, of course, the city is a municipality and not a non charitable organization, for example. But if there's ever an opportunity for some consulting capacity where we kind of tap into the work that's already been done so we're not reinventing the wheel, I would just encourage that.
Mr. President, if I may, thank you, Marcus, Councilman, very much. Dr. Kerewak, CEO, President, Bay State Health Systems, and sent me correspondence and commending this move here, whatever help that he can give. And as you know, with Wayfinders, you know, before Peter Gagny, already, when I, Director Sheen and I were able to get that $2 million, we went to a reputable group that knew how to move that money for Boris Sod. So we're, and Helen, actually, this comes up in our cabinet meetings, COVID-19 coronavirus. She's also challenged a lot of organizations who are doing this work about what they're doing and how we don't want to duplicate it, how we can partner together, or what are you doing, your state money, you need to do this. This is your piece of the puzzle here. But she, also in that proposal that we put together, that recommendations, working together, the community, the business community, the faith community, bring also recommendations where, we might be all on the same page anyways, but hearing from them, but we're going to utilize it. We've got Wayfinders, and you had mentioned, my mind just went blank now.
Bay State, Bay State.
I'm sorry?
Bay State, yes.
Bay State, yeah. So, as with you, it's been a long day and night. So, they have programs that are going to be very helpful to us also. So this, we're not a cure-all, but I think this is going to be, under Helen, a clearinghouse saying, hey, you need to do A, B, C. We're going to do X, Y, Z. Somebody's going to do H and I here, and we're going to coordinate it. Group cause, all the way to, on the training, cultural, sensitivity, mental, in-house, out-house, and then also on some of the uptick of gunning, gang violence. So, you know, I couldn't have a better person than Helen, and she really has helped me at booking a lot of things that they're driven at times by health issues.
That's important, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Williams, Counselor Brown, followed by Counselor Whitfield.
Yes, I want to commend the mayor. I reached out to his administration, and there was an organization that I'm one of the founding members of called The Wake, where what they're trying to attempt is the same thing that we have been, have done. Kalon Brown was the actual president. So it can be done. I talked to Tommy. So this is still kind of like something that we tried to accomplish. I think, you know, where, where we have to understand is that it can't just be, it has, the only way it can work is the people who work it, they have to have requirements. They have to have a criminal record. If they don't, it doesn't work. They have to be able to be in the community, entrenched in the community. So some of the people who we're looking to hire for these positions, they have to have that element where they can actually go in, and they've changed their lives now, but to be able to reach that element. This is something that I've worked on my whole life. I understand it. I commend the mayor. There's, I just want to make sure that we all understand that these positions, you know, they can't, they can't look as cookie-coated like all of us. They have to have some of that element where it might not be as, as their criminal record. If they don't have a criminal record and they're working on the actual position, it's not going to work. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Brown, Counselor Whitfield, followed by Counselor Gomez on the order.
President, Commissioner, there could not have been a better person to lead this initiative. So Mayor, I thank you for creating the department, and also I commend you on choosing Commissioner Colton Harris as the person who will lead this initiative. I don't know what we're going to do if you decide to retire along with Pat Sullivan. We appreciate the work that you guys do so much. So just stay with us a little longer. But I wanted to say that I think an additional $75,000 in this budget would help. It was already included in the revenue numbers in the original budget before cut. And I think that we could work on the institutional racism along with nepotism, along with the other injustices that the Commissioner has already highlighted. I don't think an additional $75,000 would hurt. And again, just to mention that it was included in the revenue numbers originally. So I just want you to strongly consider that. And I just really appreciate you listening to the community and creating such a powerful department. It really shows that you care for the whole community. And again, Commissioner, I thank you for the work you have already done upfront and look forward to working with you and getting more information about this department.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. Counselor Gomez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I really love this, I really love this idea. I think this, this idea of, you know, it's a, it's a step of good faith on, you know, investing into the community. I'm sorry, I have a crying daughter here. I'm sorry, moving back, I'm back. So I thought the crying was coming towards me. Sorry. So, so, you know. So respectfully, in my, in my humblest opinion, I think that one thing that I do know is, I know neighborhood, I know people. I have been part of trusted groups of folks that have created this kind of work, that's done it with $0. You know, for a lot of folks that didn't know that there was a lot of communication before we had the uptick and the violence in the city of Springfield, that we were bringing such organizations and people together, you know, with, with the help of these, I would, I've used the mayor's, I guess, phrase, the street cred, right? Individuals like, organizations like the vanguards, like the FOI, the fruits of Islam. And we were having these really underground, on-the-street conversations early on in my, my political career. And they only kind of trusted myself to be there because of, you know, the mistrust of, you know, just law enforcement and how things matriculate. Moving forward, what I would like to see, and I know we can't do that now, but in the future, Mr. Mayor, a long time ago, the Shannon Grant, I had mentioned it before, and the SSY grant, you know, like you said, this is seed money. And I know that moving forward, I would love to see maybe, I don't know how we would do that or how we could communicate that because, you know, what we're trying to do is create relationships within our community, regardless of, you know, black and brown, C3, entirely across the city of Springfield. I think that, you know, that Shannon Grant money and that SSY money speaks to building relationships with those organizations that this department would, would build with. And then on top of it, like organizations like New North Citizens Council and MLK that got some of that gun money from the state. Those are organizations that I would see this, this, this department would build with. And, you know, I would love to see maybe for the next time around how we can, you know, direct access to, when it comes to a lot of these community funds that we are creating, kind of come out of this, this department. But essentially, since, you know, and my, and my concern has always, is just how it looks and, and what are the inner, you know, the nuts and bolts to it? You know, I really wanted to have more of a, of a discussion on what that looks like because before I was a city councilor, I used to run the North End Youth Center for quite a while. I worked at the YMCA with, with kids from five to 18. This is something that I pride myself on, and I have extensive professional history working with inner-city youth and, you know, with, and running programs. I just think that, you know, and organizing in the neighborhood that I appreciate a quarter million dollars or the money that you have put together to put this in, but I just feel like there should be more. Hopefully, the seed money is just the beginning, and maybe a conversation could have, we can engage in a conversation because I know my colleagues had addressed and asked about, you know, how to open up those other programs or those other grants, which are really important to, to the community. But how do we, you know, get it into the community's hands and maybe have like kind of a community perspective? I think in this climate, these are the conversations that we would love to have and to engage with. And, you know, and I don't mean it by no way when I, when I'm about to make my next statement. But it's only important, and it's very important to me. And I don't mean this in any, and I don't want nobody to take this disrespectful. But if we're going to have a conversation about black and brown lives, you have three Puerto Rican, three Latinos on this council. And it's not taken away from anything because black lives matter. I come from African descent. I come, and, you know, I come from all shades of blue, and I support my, my community and the black community during this time. But if we're going to consistently keep on talking about black and brown lives, just, you know, a little of appreciation to have a brown life in there? Because at the end of the day, I'm still, I still grew up black and American. I'm a little emotional about it because I took some, some hits because I stated this. And I stand in solidarity with my brothers and sisters in these injustices. And, 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 Mr. Mayor, you know me. You know the work that I've done when Jafet was alive. And you know, this, this, this work is why I sit in, and is elected, and I'm, and I am elected now because of that. But, you know, the truth and the fact of the matter is when, when we're working on the privilege that my, my community has, right? We want to be able to say, you know what, we do have privilege. Because at the same time, it gets us, it gives us a chance to educate the folks that can pass, right? The folks that, you know, are from a lighter hue. And I can say, you know what, in some cases, not a lot, you know, I've passed and I've been able to code switch. But we're having conversations of this magnitude, and I understand, you know, what you've done thus far to meet with, you know, with leaders in our community has been exceptional. But that was one of my reasons why I've been so critical up to this point. And with, I would have, I would like to, you know, really dive into the health aspect of bringing people together, regardless of who you are, you know, in all aspects of this. But, you know, at the same time, you know, it's just, it, it, it just, it pierces me when you're, we're trying to do good and sometimes, and no fault, no fault towards you, but, and the conditions that all of our communities are in. You know, because a lot of stuff flips through the cracks, and I'm hoping this organization and this department can really help us dive into those hard conversations that are ahead of us. And I just want to say, I commend you guys. I commend the, the rest of the leaders that, you know, were involved with this, with this conversation. I, I really am so ready to, to, to really engage specifically with that department. And, you know, I'm going to be honest, I was going to motion this to committee. But in, in, in really good faith, I want to be able to show that, you know what, I am workable. I'm also teachable, too. And at the same time, you know, this, this is important because since I've been elected here, and there's many times I had to step out of the council to get calls of friends and family passing away, gunshot victims. You know, this last, last couple, two, three months, there've been rides for, to stop gun violence, four times. And four times, you know, folks haven't been there, you know? And folk, there's folks that have been there. And I understand, we're under some circumstances. But I'm just hoping that we're going to see this program, and this program never, never, never not, when you're gone, I'm gone, we're all gone, that it will exist forever. Because it took, it took 400 years to, to, to get to this point where we're going to try to fix this. And I just want to thank you for, for being able to be a part of this and the healing. And with that being said, I'm not going to motion this to committee, but I am going to say thank you. And honestly, you know, some of these cuts that we did make early on were to put in perspective that the community needs more investment. And regardless, wherever I go, you are my mayor. And I'm going to support you 110% when I'm out, wherever I go. And, you know, I just want to start building these relationships and these conversations. Thank you.
Thank you.
President, if I just, thank you.
May.
Forget that I cut my teeth. District Attorney Bill Bennett, Cetera's brother, dealing with the hardcore borderline juvenile probation with the CAP program and structured communities, and then my own South End Community Center. So this is near and dear to my heart. And we had, you mentioned New North Citizens Council came up in conversation a week or 10 days ago about, when we had the collaboration, it was called the Triangle Program. We were award-winning with the South, my South End Community Center, Dora Robinson at MLK, Michael Denny, God rest his soul, the New North Citizens Council. And we all collaborated and worked together. Who had this, who didn't have that? We dealt with a lot, as you know, borderline and tough kids, and it was successful. So in this conversation with Helen, the communities, I started to think back, the programs I did, whether with DA, created with DA Bennett, or my own South End Community Center, and going back to the root cause and the core. So I appreciate it, and we all have to be a part of it, to get to the root cause. Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Looks like Counselor Davila, you will have the last word, and then we'll move to a vote on this.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. I will be as brief as humanly possible. Mr. Mayor, a little while ago, I did state publicly that I stand with you when it comes to combating some of these violent criminals, criminals should not be on the streets. I agree with you 100, 1,000, 13% of that. However, there's unintended consequences. And to me, to me, Mr. Mayor, I still not quite clear what this office does. I know you explain it. I know the Commissioner Colton explained that, explained. I don't feel I have enough. To be honest with you, I say with all the respect, your press release confuses the heck out of me. Every time, every time I read it, I get more confused. And so I do think, my point, getting to my specific point is, I still don't see. And what I have a little difficulty here is, and you won't press release. see, and, and what I have a little difficulty here is in your one press release, Mr. Mayor, you talk extensively about the court, law enforcement, and the last thing that I want anybody getting the impression is, that although unfortunately many of the gangs make up its of minorities, that it's not because they're minorities that it's gonna make them a gang member as opposed to the, to the social inequalities and the deep structural inequalities that we have in our country, which have been going on since the beginning of this nation. That bothers me, Mr. Mayor, and that's, every time I read them, Mr. Mayor, all your respect, that's what the impression that I come with. So I see, I, I see that, that, that stereotype almost in, in, in this press release. Uh, with that being said, Mr. Mayor, uh, my other point is that I, I am concerned that this office may be end up becoming a de facto agent, uh, of law enforcement, uh, uh, and that's one of the unintended consequences that I'm talking about. And, and I'm almost positive that's not intentional. Uh, so I'm very unclear of, of what it's not gonna be doing, what the relationship with law enforcement gonna be, 'cause you go on talking about courts, blah, blah, and so, so I, I, I would love to hear more about that, Mr. Mayor, because I, I, I don't want this such important work, such important office to be compromised by anything in the future.
Mr. President, if I may.
Yes.
But I know, and even the second paragraph, I, I put in there, it's my words that I wrote there, that when you look at it, facilitation of this office or, or the street workers or racial equity, and it's folks specifically, whether it's gang members that get to their families, even at times when appropriate, advocating for them in court, the help that they need. I know I wrote that, right in the press release, and as far as with the factual office, I put the office under Helen Colton Harris, and believe you what, what I tell you, nobody's gonna tell Helen what to do. I, I purposely shifted it out of the police department, so I, but I, I don't have the, I'm just visualizing my press release, but when you look in there, it does say, besides getting to the report, it does say about facilitating, with, you said this, the, uh, the, uh, uh, other things that spread out and happened when somebody goes bad, well, this family, and about facilitating and helping out what resources are available, whether private, public, governmental, and it even says it in there, when appropriate, when appropriate, to add.
Uh, I, uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm not, uh, questioning whether or not it should be on the Health and Human Services, but I think that's quite appropriate. Uh, what is bothering me, and I'm sure that, uh, Commissioner Colton is gonna do her very best to ensure this one's smooth. Uh, however, I still, uh, again, that's sort of unintended consequences, because this is all, uh, I don't wanna use the word a fly, but it's basically on the fly. And so, I, I, you know, we know that people that work in government could by their actions inadvertently become an agent of the, of law enforcement, and, and I know that, and I know you guys know that. So, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, just expressing my deep concerns on that, uh, it feels my obligation to, to say that, uh, in the spirit, even, in the spirit of supporting you or supporting the city, uh, I, I will, I will vote in favor of this, but I just wanna make it clear that I'm gonna be paying attention to this office, and, and I do hope, as Counselor Brown was saying a while back, that once we vote the same, that you guys are gonna still talk to us about this, that we don't have to find out all things on the press, uh, because this is an office that honestly, I want to know more, what the process is, what's gonna do what, the relationship, uh, the, the, the working relationship with the law enforcement, with the courts, so forth and so on. So I'll, in the spirit of that, Mr. Mayor, I will support you, uh, I will vote in favor of this, but I just wanted to make it clear of what else I might, thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. Saying no more hands raised in the queue, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll on this order?
On approving the FY twenty-one supplemental budget order for the Office of Racial Equity, Counselor Gomez. Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Counselor. Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
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 Yes, Counselor Ferring?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes.
Can, can you repeat that, Attorney Davis?
Counselor Loft?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Letterman?
Yes.
Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown?
Yeah.
Yes. Counselor Hurst?
No, uh, the order is approved. Madam Clerk, is there any further business before the council? Saying none, we stand adjourned until our next regular meeting, July twentieth at six thirty. Uh, have a great evening.
Thank you, everyone.